Okay, good evening, Council and to other guests who are joining us tonight, whom we'll be recognizing as we move through our agenda. It's good to see all of you Council members and thank you for being present. I think as we begin this evening, it would be appropriate for me to wish a happy St. Patrick's Day to all of you. I believe tomorrow is the official day and so where are you green or you might get pinched. I understand it's part of the tradition, so be careful with that. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and formally get our meeting started and hopefully we can move through our agenda in an expeditious fashion. So I'm going to ask the clerk if she will to call the roll at this time.
Yes, sir. Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson, so very much. And as is our usual practice, we will begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll call on Mr. Singleton to lead that and then I believe he will also have our indication as well. So if you'll join us at this time.
If you'll join us, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Okay, if you'd like, if you'll join me in a brief invocation. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight and talk about business. That is important to our town and our community. Father, we ask that you be with the members of our staff, those who were involved in these public hearings in the council. The decisions we make are the best decisions for our town in the long run. Father, we lift up those who are sick, those who are battling illnesses, whether it be COVID or cancer or another serious illness. If you wrap your arms around these families and try to comfort them as these people try to get treatment and to be healed. Special prayer, Father, those men and women representing our country and the armed forces all around this world, be with them and be with their families and protect them as they serve to protect the rights and freedoms of our country. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Singleton. I really appreciate your leading us this evening. So as we begin our meeting this evening, a couple of procedural things I need to do and also explanations since we are yet again meeting virtually. So I need to inform you and our public, those who are listening in, that this meeting is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Sessions Law 2020-3. Whenever a council member cannot be seen on the screen, that member will identify him or herself by name prior to asking questions or participating in deliberations or making motions or proposing amendments and voting. So those are procedures that we will go by. The first item on our agenda is petitions and comments. And in regards to that, I also need to make just a few comments. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. Since the council's meeting virtually, interested parties can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform or provide written comments that will be shared with the council. And there is an online site to go to that I won't cite at this time. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought before during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And just before I recognize, I believe, at least one person who wishes to speak, I would remind their speakers that generally petitions will be limited to three to five minutes per speaker. That's done in order to expedite our meetings and so we would ask that you honor that. Ms. Gibson, I have, I believe, one person who has signed up to speak at this time and the name I have is Lauren Bradley. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I believe that's correct.
Okay, so I will recognize at this time Lauren Bradley to speak under this segment of our agenda. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate getting some time to speak and to be here with y'all today. My name is Lauren Bradley. I live at 169 Gusset Drive. One of the reasons my wife and I chose to live in Garner was because we could be 15 minutes from downtown and still have trees in our backyard. And we got really lucky with our neighborhood. When you turn off Timber Drive onto Vandora Springs towards the roundabout, you get to drive through that beautiful tree canopy and for a moment you forget that we're very close to a state capital. Developers will build here in Garner because people want to live here and one of the reasons is because of the natural beauty. And trees make Garner beautiful and they make Garner feel like we're further away from the big city than we really are. I don't believe that our current tree preservation requirement of 10% is enough. Other municipalities in Wake County have a 30% requirement. So I'm here today to ask that we meet or exceed this requirement in the UDO rewrite. And I'm not alone. In the last five days, over 200 Garner residents have also added their name and comments to a petition requesting an increase to the tree preservation requirement. I sent that list to the town clerk earlier today to be entered into the official record and we've had many more signatures since then. So I will be glad to send an updated list tomorrow and to the council members and to you also, Mr. Mayor, if you would like to see that. Thank you so much for the time to speak.
Okay, and Lauren, let me confirm that I did receive the petitions list and I have it here and it will be entered into the record and any updates made on that, we will receive them as well. And I should note that that period of petition is still open and available, I believe, at this time. So your comments are so noted and thank you for taking the time to meet with us and to speak with us this evening, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, the next item of business is adoption of the agenda. And before I ask for a motion, I should note that the town manager alerted me to the fact that there is, I believe, an Item 3 under Old and New Business, which I believe each of you should have received a copy of. Mr. Manager, I'm trying to remember, that's part of the
Correct.
That's the fee schedule, I believe, that was left off of the other information. Am I right on that, sir?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. That is the fee schedule associated with the Chapter 160D implementation. It's not increasing fees per se. It's basically putting them in the right category to be consistent with the Chapter 160D requirements.
So if council approves the agenda with the amendment or with the change, that would go as Item Number 3 under Old and New Business, I believe. Is that correct, sir?
Correct. This is an item council saw previously at a previous meeting and we were not able to implement it until the actual 160D rules are put in place, which will be prior to this item in the new old business.
Okay. Thank you for that notation and, Council, with that change noted, I will entertain a motion for approval of our agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Kathy. Just a moment, personal privilege. Just if I may comment on the petition and comment that was made. I'm very supportive of that type of change and the town examining that through our UDO process and through our planning department. And I'd like for that proposal to be, I'd move for it to be referred to the UDO, to be drafted and forwarded to the UDO committee. Ms. Behringer, I both sit on that committee. And if it would be the pleasure of the council to refer that recommendation and amendment, I think that would be fantastic.
Okay, I think we can consider that at this point, Mr. Dellinger. So, Council, and I guess you made those comments and ended that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would that be formally referred to that committee? Is there a second to Mr. Dellinger's motion?
Well, stop. We don't need a motion to do this. I mean, the committee can bring back anything they want. We don't have to make a motion to bring back a tree canopy thing because then we might have a public hearing and then we might change it then. So if the committee can address this, that's fine. You're already looking at it, that's fine. We don't need to have a motion to get through this process. It's a draft that's still got months and months of work into it. So we've heard the petition. It's a reasonable petition. And the committee has heard it. The two members of the committee are here. And I would expect the two members of the committee to take it back to the committee with the staff and other people and discuss it.
I guess my position on that is there seems to be a certain amount of urgency that we, by the petitioners, since there's the volume of them to accelerate this. We've had several other things come before us in the midst of the UDO rewrite that fell out of the schedule of the UDO rewrite. And I would just like to make the formal motion that we make this particular recommendation to that committee to consider.
Okay.
Again, since we don't have details, I mean, just say we're going to increase the canopy from 10 to 30. There's too many details just to know from 10 to 30 for what? A piece of property that has nothing but lot, bawdy pines on it, that would look a whole lot better if we get completely cleared off and started over?
Right.
I mean, there's different ways to look at this. So again, I don't think this has to be a formal motion of take it to the committee. You've heard that. Me and Mr. Matthews and Mr. Vance hadn't disagreed and just move on, take a motion now. It's like, well, we're 100% for.
No, 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 no.
Or something. I don't know what it is.
I don't think it means we're for it. That's not what making a motion or putting Part of my motion is to draft the amendment, which is what the planning department does when these text amendments come in a rough format. They draft an actual ordinance that then goes before that committee so it has something with substance to consider that then goes through them and then Planning Commission and back to us and back to hearings. So it's not saying that we as a body are in favor of it per se. We're in favor of them drafting something for that committee to work from. That's
Okay, I'm going to see if we can move us on along beyond this. And I appreciate the positions both of you have at this point. I think procedurally, we have a motion before us on the floor. That motion can go forward with a vote with a second. If it doesn't get a second, obviously it will die at this point. But your points are made. So, Council, what is your pleasure? Does anybody else care to make a quick comment as relates to the motion that has been made? Or actually, the proper thing to do would be to see if there's a second motion, I believe.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all of you have heard Mr. Dellinger's comments and also Mr. Singleton in regards to his argument that there's not a need for this, but there is a second. Other council members care to weigh in on this by comment before we vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Yeah. I understand where Mr. Dellinger's come from and understand where Mr. Singleton's come from. I'm a little concerned if we push, it's the first time I've seen us do this, that we push this forward like this, that I think we've got those, as Gray mentioned, on board with us tonight, far as our representatives on this committee, that it's something, if we're going to talk about it, we need to discuss it a little bit more formally. I've heard her numbers and I'm not sure how this is going to be received. So with all due respect, I have a little concerns about us moving forward with this.
Okay. Anybody else care to weigh in? Mr. Vance, do you have any comments you care to make?
You unmute yourself, Mr. Vance, yeah.
I'm with Mr. Matthews and what he's saying. I hear both arguments and both are sound arguments. My question would be if we go forward with this motion and it and it's not needed, my first statement would be, why do it? And the next statement would be, if it's approved, then what difference will it make? Because it's going back to the committee for study anyway. That's already going to happen. So the purpose of the motion is to have it, what? That's where I am with this. Because it's going back to the committee to be looked at and studied. So
May I make a suggestion? Could we possibly send, I can do it, send a message to, I believe it's Brian Godfrey, that is head of that, the consultant that's working with us, that we have some concerns about this and we'd like some attention paid to it in the committee meeting? Would that be sufficient, Damian?
Yeah, I mean, really just, we have a number of citizens who have, want this addressed. It's a relatively simple motion. Maybe it's procedural, maybe it's a formality, maybe it's but to show confidence in citizens making that interest in the process. You know, I'm just trying to show support for the effort. And again, it's not that we're, as a body, in favor of whatever comes out of the eventual process. That's why there's a whole process of multiple public hearings for this. But so I'm just trying to, public's supportive of it, I'm supportive of it. I want to give it another just vote of support. That's all.
And I understand that, Damian, procedurally, since something comes up in one of our meetings to refer to Public Works, we don't take a vote and ask the council to take it and send it back to Public Works and y'all talk about it. We just say it'll be referred to the Public Works Committee. If someone comes up with Human Resources to name someone to one of our volunteer committees, we don't have a full vote. We refer it out to the Human Resources Committee. So I would just say simply, we're in agreement to address it. Just refer it to the UDO committee and y'all look at the numbers and give us some information. I had no trouble that night. I just didn't know why we're doing a motion because we don't give the committees.
So, okay, so the position is just for the council to refer this to the committee?
Yes.
Everybody's in consensus? Okay, I withdraw the motion. I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't, I don't hear anybody in the contention with what is being asked. So I don't, I don't see the issue. There's not one, I believe, but I may be wrong.
Well, and I, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. The last sentence of my instruction says, of course, the topics that require further investigation that we receive by way of petitions and comments will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda if that's necessary. But it definitely will be referred. That's the common practice that we view. So did I hear you say at this point, based on the discussion you're hearing, that you're willing to withdraw the motion, sir?
Yes, sir. And I thank my fellow council members for my procedural naivete.
All right, I believe properly, Ms. Parliamentarian, that also I need the person who seconded the motion to be willing to withdraw. Well, I'll ask her if she's willing to do that. Ms. Behringer, yeah?
Withdraw the second?
Yeah, well, I don't know if that's necessary before the
Sure, I'm willing to withdraw it.
Okay. Okay. All right, so there'll be no vote taken. And Mr. Dellinger, your comments and your reasoning behind this is certainly noted and will be in the minutes taken by the clerk, okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is the manager.
Yes.
So, yeah, Mr. Trezenberg is on the call. So what we'll do is, having heard council comments, is make sure he relays to the committee that the council has a desire to look at something higher than 10%, as much as 30, and then investigate the feasibility of that. Probably comes with some research, see what that impact's going to have on the existing land that we have and maybe even look at what other municipalities are doing and just see how that affects development and where that might fit into our UDO rewrite. So we'll take it from there.
Okay, I think we have resolved that matter, at least for now. And we'll hear more on that, I'm sure. But so thank you very much. So with that, I believe we were preparing ourselves to vote on the agenda and we had a motion and I'm not sure, did we have a second on that? Did anybody second the motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, second that. So we need to take a roll call vote as we will be doing on most items that we're voting on tonight. So I will ask Ms. Gibson if she will call the roll on approving the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion is approved. Approval of the agenda is made. I know there were at least three other persons who notified us of their desire to speak tonight. I believe all three of those are speaking at a little bit later time in the agenda, so I will recognize them at that time. So at this point, we are at presentations. We have two presentations this evening. I'm pleased to note that we have with us the CEO of Passage Home, Mr. Seth Friedman, a man that I know and met some time back. So, Mr. Friedman, we will welcome you at this time and hear from you for your presentation, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Nice warm welcome, Ken, or Mayor Mashburn, sorry. And it's great to see so many familiar faces on the call or on the video conference. Like Mayor Mashburn said, my name is Seth Friedman. I'm the CEO of Passage Home. I've been with Passage Home going on three years. And Passage Home suffers from a problem that many nonprofits do, that you don't know who we are until you need us. And so hopefully, I'm going to get out a little bit ahead of that and I'll spread the word around Garner for what Passage Home does. Passage Home is Wake County's anti-poverty organization as designated by the state. We're a community action agency and receive funds from the state, the city of Raleigh, Wake County, and different municipalities throughout the county, as well as some private funding. What's great about our designation as the anti-poverty organization is we are provided a lot of flexibility in our anti-poverty efforts. So what was important to Passage Home was to truly understand what poverty looks like, what causes poverty, what kind of cement family into the cycle of poverty. And through our study, through our research, through our understanding, through speaking with the community, we believe that one of the main causes of poverty, and this can be a big chicken or an egg thing, is insecure housing. So a lot of, a lot of society sees families that live in impoverished communities, quote-unquote, projects or less desirable neighborhoods and assume that it was their decisions that led them there. But Passage Home would push back and say it is those communities that have not only led them to poverty but have maintained their citizenship in poverty. And what I mean by that is housing, and I think everybody would agree, is a basic need. A shelter. Without safe, secure, stable shelter, families, parents, children suffer with a lack of security and a lack of long mental health. Because when you miss any basic need, whether it's food, whether it's housing, whether it's love and comfort, that is your primary focus day to day. You are wondering, am I going to be safe tonight? Am I going to have a place to sleep? Is there going to be food on the table? Do I have to worry about my children? And when you have this constant nudge in the back of your mind that's taking up all your attention, it creates an inability to focus on any long-term goal. Like if you're an adult, improving employment or going on a job hunt or putting together a resume, because everything in the back of your mind is focused on meeting that one thing. If you're a child and you're concerned about your safety or, you know, if I get off the school bus or my parents, they're really going to be somewhere else and we have to jump from couch to couch and now we're living somewhere else, how do you focus in class? How do you get a good education and graduate high school and go on to bigger and better? You know, a metaphor I always use, I think everybody here at some point in their educational career or professional career skipped breakfast. And if you have a meeting at 12 o'clock right before lunch and you've been meeting all day, your stomach starts rumbling. There's one thing you're thinking of that entire time during that 12 o'clock meeting. It's what am I going to eat for lunch? And what, your attention is never fully on that meeting because you are focused on a basic need. And imagine going through life like that as a family and that basic need being housing. So Passage Home's first task and foremost task is to make sure all the families that we serve in Wake County have permanent, stable, secure housing. We believe once we help families find and maintain permanent, secure housing, that is the moment in time when we can start their progression towards self-sufficiency. So our first step, and it's important I say first step because we take many steps, is help families stabilize housing. During the pandemic alone over the past 12 months, we've helped families maintain housing to tune up 1,100 months, so 1,100 months of rent and utility payments for families to maintain housing security during this pandemic. And obviously, you know, you can tell, I think housing security is extremely important, but during this pandemic, for a lot of our transient families, maintaining their housing helped them either not come in contact with somebody who had the coronavirus or if, worst case, they had the coronavirus, prevented it from spreading throughout the community. But, you know, that's obviously specific to this time. Once we're able to secure housing, and I know housing, you know, Garner at the time has some naturally affordable housing, naturally occurring affordable housing, but for how much longer? And so what Passage Home does is we, right now, we own and operate 100 units of affordable housing. We're about to build 200 additional units near downtown Raleigh of affordable housing. And affordable means everything from 30% AMI to families making 80% AMI. For the Wake County, someone making 80% AMI for a family of four makes about $70,000 a year. Family makes $70,000. So this is not only workforce housing, this is, you know, comfortable workforce housing. This is your two teachers married, this is a police officer, a fireman, people that serve the community. And it's important because if that more private affordable housing gets priced out, the people that serve our community are no longer able to live in our community. So we maintain and we build affordable housing. Hopefully, as Garner continues to grow, you know, that's something that the town council continues to put at their forefront. And once we help families find affordable housing, you know, and as we continue to build affordable housing, we help them towards self-sufficiency. And that, we believe, is through economic mobility and job training. So currently, we have a job training program, which is obviously impacted by COVID-19, so we're unable to hold class sessions. But one of the things we did and we think will really be, we hope to be visionary, is we created what we call the Workforce Development Portal. And Garner can really plug right into this. So what a Workforce Development Portal is, so you know, everybody here has heard of the University of Phoenix. But the University of Phoenix is not inexpensive. And for families struggling to make ends meet, you know, they can't, they don't have access to these online classes. And so what we've created is this Workforce Development Portal where they can take live, online job training classes, asynchronous, learn at your own pace, job training classes and, I'm sorry, in a hybrid, both live and online. And what this does for communities throughout Wake County, they can log in at their time. For a lot of our clients that work a minimum wage jobs, you know, if someone works a minimum wage job at 7:25 an hour, 52, 52 weeks a year, 40 hours a week, you're still only making $15,000. And if we ask them to sacrifice, you know, even a couple hours of that money, they might not be able to make ends meet. So we say, learn at your own time, learn at your own pace. You know, you don't have to sacrifice transportation, you don't have to sacrifice childcare, you don't have to sacrifice a minimum wage job to fight for a better job. And this Workforce Development Portal is going, you're going to have access to the class, access to a case manager, job search functions, all in one place. So think of it as a one-stop shop for individuals trying to improve their employability. And I know Garner, for instance, has, you know, one Amazon facility and just opened a second satellite facility. And those are great jobs, but they're still only $12, $14 an hour for the majority of them. And we know for Wake County, $16 an hour is the minimum right now of living wage work. And we hope to help our client. hour is the minimum right now of living wage work. And we hope to help our client move toward that living wage employment through this job training program. We form relationships with Wake Tech, with other online firefighters, one called Phil Train, and also employers. And we look to connect them all from one stop. So, I know I talk a lot, and I talk quickly, and I cover it a lot. But what Passage Home does is help families find stability and security, which allows them to free the space in their mind to focus on both their personal development, their economic development, and their children's development, hopefully to break the cycle of poverty. And the multi-generational cycle of poverty, because if your child's growing up in poverty, that constant stress, that constant trauma is always sitting back in your mind, whether you're in school, at home, or playing with friends, there's always that stress that impacts your healthy development. So, that's who we are. That's what we do. I know it's a lot. You know, we hope to work more with Garner. Most of our focus has been in Raleigh and out even further east in Devalon and Wendell, but we think there's a need in Garner. And we think now is the time to really grow our relationships with Garner and hopefully our reach.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Friedman. I want to thank you for the good work you do. I have some familiarity with that. And I think Ms. Behringer also has served on your board. Not sure if Mr. Dellinger is a new person on the board. Okay, he's joined that. So, we've certainly had a representation there. And I'm sure our folks will be sensitive to opportunities that are provided through your organization to help people we're aware of. Did I hear somebody want to make a quick comment, question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to compliment Mr. Friedman. I guess compliment's not the right word because it's his passion. But Passage Home is an amazing organization. And I was very, what do I want to say? I had the opportunity to serve for five years there. It was time well spent and helped me to understand a lot more about what their mission is and how they accomplish it. And they do a fantastic job.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from council at this point?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, I've only been on the board since December, but it's got a strong board. It's got amazing forward momentum in a lot of the work they're doing, the stuff they've done during COVID is really amazing and will continue to be needed through this year as evictions and those types of things start to ramp up. And we had a committee meeting this afternoon, and some of the projects and the way they approach things are things that we should, we'll start to look at and say, well, that was interesting. You know, maybe that's an opportunity for us here. And, you know, not your traditional sort of approaches to addressing some of these issues. So, I'm excited to be involved and hope we can find some ways to work together. And I'm glad we've had, the town has had a long relationship with the organization.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Mr. Dellinger. And as our, I guess, liaison or board member to that, we will anticipate, of course, you keeping us aware of new developments and ways that we can continue to work with Passage Home and use their services. So, thank you, Mr. Friedman, for taking the time out to speak to us this evening. We wish you continued success and thank you for what you're doing, sir.
Thank you all for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. The next item under presentations is a presentation by our fire chief, Matt Poole. So, he has some information in regards to either their annual, yeah, their annual report, I believe. And council, you referred to that in your agenda packet with a variety of slides and stuff. So, Mr. Poole, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to share my screen for our annual report. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me here tonight. Each year, we try to come to you and review our previous year's annual report. So, I'm glad to be here tonight to go over this brief document with you. I would just communicate to all of our citizens that are tuning in. You can go to our website, garnerfire.com, and view this report. It is a public document and it is uploaded to our website. So, I'll just briefly go through this and maybe before I pass a page, if there are any questions, we can talk about that and then I'll move on. So, this is just our cover page and our table of contents. I just will go over our, these are our social media outlets that we have for our organization. So, if anybody's interested in following any of our social media, these are those. There's a message from the fire chief. I will not bore you with that. As we get started in our annual report, and our annual report has grown and developed over the last 10 years to, this is the first year that we've used this type of document for this. And so, we're really proud of it. One thing I would like to acknowledge is, and I had emailed a copy of our new five-year strategic plan to our town management and town council about a month ago. And so, we created our first-ever long-range plan in 2010. We implemented it in 2012. And so, it was time for us to renew our strategic long-range plan. And we've done so this year. And so, in mirroring that, we wanted to make sure some of these things in our plan was reflective in our annual report. So, this is our mission statement and our vision. But one thing that has changed over the last 10 years, our staff had decided that we wanted to upgrade our values. So, we've changed some of our values and our value statement to an acronym that a committee of our firefighters chose. And so, our values for the next five years are firefighters. So, fight was an acronym. And we stand for fortitude, integrity, generosity, honor, and tradition. These are values that our department believes in, and we want these to guide our principles for the next five years. We also developed in our long-range plan this year six strategic goals. Goal one is organizational commitment towards continuous improvement. And what that is, that is accreditation. So, as you all know, we are in our final phase of the accreditation process, hopefully. And so, continual process improvement is a motto of the fire service accreditation. So, that's our strategic goal one. Our strategic goal two that was noted in our long-range plan is to continue fire department merger planning with the town of Garner, to enhance emergency response capabilities, enhance departmental training and personnel development, enhance fiscal resource allocation and replacement programs. And then one, and I would note, as we've gone through the accreditation process, we identified several strengths and several weaknesses in our organization. And one of our weaknesses that we are striving to improve on is community risk reduction. If you remember, probably a month or two ago, I came and talked to you about our socioeconomic risks of our community. And so, this is part of that effort to want to try to not only reduce future risks, but we also have to consider what we are actually responding to now and how can we reduce the risk of our current citizens. So, these are our six goals of our long-range plan. And in the document that I had emailed you, all these are outlined in much more detail. The next two pages, we wanted to highlight some accomplishments of our department. So, we broke it out this year into administrative accomplishments and then operational accomplishments. And I won't go through all these, but there are just a couple that I'd like to touch on. The first block, the town has graciously staffed the organization to allow four firefighters on each first-out company. That's a milestone for us, for adequate staffing for our department, and we cannot thank you enough. We've implemented the Town of Garner Pay Study recommendations. And again, that is something that the town council and town management decided to do that helped our existing employees. Again, we have completed our long-range plan. And then the last note in this box is we were able to put in our ventilation system in Station 3 because we have started a cancer prevention initiative. And ventilation systems in the bays of all of our stations are very important to this. The next block is mainly based on accreditation. The one that I will touch on, this adapted turnout time. We went over this with you several months ago. We've adopted a minute and 30-second turnout time for all of our staff. That's a goal that we're trying to accomplish. Essentially, when someone calls 911 and we are alerted at our station, we're asking our staff focus and try to leave the fire station in a minute and 30 seconds at the maximum. And that's even at nighttime when they're asleep. So, that's a lofty goal that we've set, and we're working on how to improve ourselves. And then the next, so this is more accreditation documents and research that we've done. And then the last is some of our community outreach. What I would like to highlight is some operational accomplishments. You hear from me a lot, being in the administrative level, but the majority of our accomplishments truly come from the operational side of our department. We've tried to highlight some of our employees this year with their scholarship awards and other awards as well. So, they're listed above. And then it breaks down some of our operational accomplishments that they have done. You know, and I would just like to recognize, even during COVID, they were able to train 8,050 hours with 15,166 hours of training, which averages out to almost 240 hours of training for every full-time employee. During COVID, we were able to complete servicing 2,400 fire hydrants. We received NFPA/OSHA physicals. And then down here, these two blocks really highlight our community outreach. And this year was very difficult for us, especially when we try to network with children as much as possible about fire prevention education. However, all these events, we were able to combat during quarantine. When we get into the data of our annual report, this is a lot of information that we get asked from the citizens in our community and our stakeholders. So, just as a review, we serve almost 65,000 people, almost 80 square miles of district. One thing I will note this year, and this is the first time this has ever happened in my tenure with this department, is we actually had a decrease of call volume. Now, it was a very small decrease, less than 20 calls from the previous year. But still, it should be noted that we had a decrease. And the reason mainly is quarantine. So, there were a lot, there were several, several months where people did not travel, people did not go to work. Our recs went down, our fire alarm activations at commercial businesses went down, children weren't in school, so medical calls and fire alarms at schools went down. So, you know, it is good for the community that our call volume did decrease. However, I will say we're projecting a 2% to 3% increase of call volume for the rest of this year. But we did have a decrease. This is just some of our stats. So, call demand by month, and I won't go through this all, but you can see what our average is, our average call volume is, and how it ebbs and flows throughout, it ebbed and flowed throughout last year. These are our four fire stations, and you can see our two busiest stations is Station 1 and Station 3. And that's mainly due to where they're located and the target risks inside the city limits of Garner versus our rural community. This is call volume by day of the week. So, you can see what the busiest, Sunday has generally always been our slowest day of the week. Most people are at home, not traveling on the roads and not at work. And that, for the most part, determines a lower amount of call volume. The hour of the day last year, so this fluctuates the total amount of calls we had for each hour of the day. And so, you can start to see where our peak times are. Our call volume by district, so 1A and 3A, that is the city limits of Garner, for Station 1 and Station 3 is the territory, and the call volume are very close together. Station 2 and Station 4 city limits, and then this is our rural unincorporated call volume for these stations. So, you've got 1, Station 1 city, and Station 1 rural, Station 2 city, Station B rural, and Station D rural, and there, so forth and so on. And then, this is something that we're really proud that we're able to produce now, is some response statistics. So, information, different information is important for different people. This piece up here, these colored bars, this is important to me. So, we have so many things that can, that weigh in on how long it takes us to get to a call. This first block, and I've talked to you about this, this is alarm handling. This is how long it takes the 911 center to take a call and to dispatch us. And in the past, we've really had no information on this. We've had no input on this. And it, right now, it's 3 minutes and 37 seconds is a 90th percentile call, alarm handling. I will tell you this, that we have a goal to get this down to 90 seconds, to a minute and a half. So, we've got a lot of time to work with our 911 center and try to get this number down. Because we can't even respond until we're notified. And so, if we can get this number down, it helps the rest of this along the way. This is our turnout time. And so, we had set a benchmark of a minute and 30 seconds. We're currently at a minute and 51. So, we've got some work to do on how we trim down our turnout time. And this is 90th percentile. This isn't average. This is what we're doing 90th percent of the time. This is our travel time. This is the amount of time it's taken us to travel from the fire station to the scene. And this is the time for the total amount of units, not just the first unit, but for all the units that we need, is this number. And so, this calculates our total response time. So, this is very important to me because if we can chip away at each one of these, then we're getting to our citizens faster. Now, this is what our firefighters like to look at. They want to see, we have three rotating shifts, and they're all assigned to a shift. So, they all want to see who runs the most calls and who's the busiest and bragging rights. But they all run this very similar amount of calls. One thing I will note, and we are very unique to this, if you look at any department and you want to compare how busy they are or how many calls they have versus how many times they help somebody else, mutual aid is important. So, we received mutual aid, meaning we needed help 893 times that year. We gave help to other departments 289 times. And what that means is that we, a lot of times, we are busier than what we can handle, and so, we require some additional support. Community activities, even with COVID, we were able to outreach 516 adults and 172 children. This gets down to our call demand by type. So, these are the very broad category of calls that we respond to. The majority of them are medical calls, good-intent calls. And then, when you want to ask about structured fires, fire-related activities, we had 141 fires last year. These are, again, this is what our firefighters care about. They're assigned to a unit. They want to know how many calls they ran. And these are the actual units turnout times. So, where, you know, Captain Smith, right now, he has, you know, a minute 28 second, where Captain Suzanne has a minute 38. So, all these, we post these so our staff can see where they're ranking against other staff members. Fire, smoke alarm presence, so this is part of our community risk reduction that we are trying to improve on. So, we're trying to determine how many of these calls that we respond to actually have smoke alarms. And so, what we found, 53% of these, we know for sure that there were smoke alarms present. This is a new stat for this year, and I'm very proud of this stat. So, we've started identifying when we have a fire, you know, how good are we at attacking the fire? You know, a lot of people think if the house is on fire and you put it out, you've done a good job. Well, I don't quantify it that way. We want to quantify where, you know, how big the fire is and how big it got before we could extinguish it. What I am very, very proud to say is our department, almost 60% of the time they responded to a working house fire, they were able to confine the fire to the room of origin. Means they were able to push the fire back or contain it to where the fire started. 20% of the time, they confined it to the building of origin. 10% of the time was the actual object of origin. 7% was the floor of origin. And then, like, if a building had caught another building on fire, that would be considered an exposure. That would be that beyond building. But almost 60% of the time, our staff is able, was able to confine a fire to the room in which it started in. And that's impressive when you're talking about people being inside of a home during a fire. And then, the next couple pages are maps. So, these are hotspot locations for us. So these are hotspot locations for us. Every, you know, people like to look at different maps, so we wanted to provide different types of maps that can, that can tell the, you know, similar stories. So this is our district, this is, this is the town of Garner, and this is our unincorporated area. And these hotspots are where the majority of our calls are here. And you can see the small black dots are all the incidences. Some people like the grid system, the USNG grid system. And so this is a grid system that shows in this grid, there were a hundred and twenty-nine calls. And you can see these outlined grids, how the calls kind of diminish. So this, these are the hotspots, and this is typically the most dense area of the town of Garner. This is, uh, response clusters. So this shows these small polygon areas of where the, the call volumes fall in. Again, it's telling a similar story, but giving you the opportunity to look at, you know, just a different layer of that. And this is emergency traffic only, so a lot of times, we, we'll go, we'll respond to a call where we don't use lights and sirens. So if it's a, you know, if it's somebody that called and said it's a, you know, a CO alarm, or they know their fire alarm is malfunctioning, there's no fire, we may not run our lights and sirens. But these are all of our calls that ran by emergency traffic. So we utilize lights and sirens to respond to all of these, all of these units. And that concludes our annual report. It's a ten-page document, we wanted to keep it as small as possible without, you know, we're trying to tell our annual story the best we can. And I appreciate your time, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you've got regarding it.
Thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate, somebody probably needs to mute right now. But at any rate, good, a lot of good information. I had a chance to review some of it before it came to the meeting tonight. And as usual, lots of statistics and data. I believe I agree with you, this is the first year, I believe, I've noted there was a actual reduction in that one category, but you're still a very busy department. And I commend you and your, your fighter, firefighters there for all the good work they do. You alluded to COVID more than once, I guess, in your presentation. And I know that's been a, an item that has affected so many of our departments this year. I do understand correctly that firefighters, were they in the first line of folks who were available to receive vaccinations, or at least, am I correct in saying that your department has a, your, your people have received that opportunity, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir, we were categorized in that 1A category. And so, yes, we were one of the, the first that were made, the vaccine was made available to us. All of our employees have had the opportunity to take the vaccine.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, I will see what comments or questions council has, and we'll sort of do a ram-robin on this. I'll start with, with Mr. Vance.
First of all, Chief Poole, I really appreciate the service that the firefighters are rendering to the town of Garner and going in and being the first responders in many instances and going through this difficult time with COVID-19 and being out there, going into situations that you're not familiar, and just really placing your life in line. So your service is appreciated and a very good report and very good job for the, to the firefighters.
Thanks to Mr. Vance.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, I will go to Mr. Dellinger.
I just want to echo Mr. Vance and say, you know, the report does, it really understates all the trials and tribulations of last year and everything you all dealt with. And, you know, we'll never know all the hard times and situations you guys went into, men and women. So we appreciate everything you all do, and you do much more. And I'd be remiss, like Mr. Vance said, you guys are oftentimes the, the first responders to all kinds of situations. And so you're the face of the community a lot of times. So we're appreciative of that, and we're, we're just, it's an honor to have you all as part of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger, and I would echo our, our staff, it's been through a lot this year. You know, they didn't never prepare for a pandemic, but, you know, they, they get frustrated with it the same as everybody else, but they've done a great job and supported things that we've asked them to do that they did not want to do. I can assure you of that, but I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you. I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tim Behringer, who is our board liaison to the fire.
Well, I just want to thank the chief for his hard work and his staff. The past ten years have been full and, and even more so. And you know, you know what you have when an outsider pulls you aside at a public event in the area and says, "I want to make sure you know what you have in the Garner Fire Department." That was said to me a few years back, and I was happy to say, I can assure you, we are aware that we have the best. And so, Chief Poole, thank you for your hard work and your commitment to making Garner, Garner safe and for making our department the best there is.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for serving as our liaison.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, any comments, questions?
Yes, I concur with everything that my colleagues have said, Chief Poole. You have a lot of statistical information, I won't say crammed into ten pages, but you got a heck of a lot of information within your report. And I appreciate that information. I was looking on my screen, yours is a little bigger than, than the shared screen you had. But you have a lot of incredible information, not only with some of your graphics, but also when you talk about your training hours, all the work that you do, not only volunteering, and, and last year was a different year in volunteering, giving time, working with younger people in the community, particular kids, and fire safety, we know that Fireman's Day had to be canceled, but looking forward to that coming back this year. So hats off to you and everyone with the fire department. And I'm glad we were able to get the pay range plan implemented and get on a more of a level playing field with some of our sister fire departments in the, in the area.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Singleton, I'd like to thank you. So the town council allowed us to hire an accreditation manager, data analyst position. Last year, we hired an assistant chief, his name is Jason Hathcock. And when COVID gets over, I plan on introducing him to you. But we could not have produced this data and this report without that resource, and y'all allowed us to, to acquire that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, and Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do concur with all my colleagues on what has been said so far. And I remember back in the days, probably one of the older ones on the board, and Chief Poole was a lot younger back in those days, and, but I had the pleasure of being a volunteer fireman and participating in the first responder class, I was one of the first students in that one. And it has come a long way. And Chief Poole, you and your team are to be congratulated for what you've accomplished. This has been a fabulous report, these numbers are outstanding. And I know our upcoming bond, we're looking at Station Five out there, which I truly believe is going to happen, and it's well-needed out in that area, will help you achieve these numbers that you have been presenting. And you and your team and all the rank-and-file members are to be congratulated. And as Kathy says, the, the town is proud of our fire department. And as Gray said, we're looking forward to having Fireman's Day again, we're going to go down there and, and see all you guys. But thank you again, and please pass on, I think this board stands behind the fire department a hundred and fifty percent in your needs. Because when the time comes, you want to see that red light in front of your house as fast as possible. And I'm impressed with these numbers, and I'm even impressed even more what your targets will be. And I feel that you will achieve that, so congratulations and proud to, to be working with you on upcoming things.
Thank you, and we look forward to Fireman's Day too. That is something that we hope to ramp back up again. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief, certainly I echo and support the comments made by the council and their appreciation for all that you do. I should note, sort of on a, well, I don't know if it's a personal note, but Chief Poole's a busy guy. And so, but they let him slip away just occasionally to attend to his membership in our Garner Rotary Club. And so, sir, I hope to see you at our meeting in the morning maybe again.
I will be there, seven AM.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again for your presentation, and keep up the good work, all right?
You're safe, thank you.
Okay, council, we are now to the item on our agenda, item six, the consent agenda. And there are three items on the consent agenda. I think you're familiar with all of those, so at this point, I would entertain a motion for approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I need a second for that.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Then unless there's any further discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll for approval.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Dellinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Vance.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, the motion is approved, and thank you for approving the consent agenda. We will move right along now to the next item, which is the item H, public hearings. And before we begin, begin our initial one, I need to remind council and others of, of some procedural things that will be impacted for our public hearings. I should mention upfront that since we're meeting virtually, interested parties can participate in public hearings by either appearing live on the virtual meeting platform or providing written comments that will be shared with council. And I believe that information is certainly out in the public domain. So for our first public hearing, I need to indicate that this will be a quasi-judicial hearing. All persons who have standing to participate must indicate whether or not he or she consents to the remote meeting prior to speaking or giving testimony. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. And I must inquire, council members, do any of you have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any expert communication? Have you had any close familial business or other associational, excuse me, associational relationships with an affected person or had a financial interest in the outcome? If so, you should indicate that at this time.
None.
Okay. So this is a fact-finding hearing, and all incompetent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts on property value, traffic safety, or noise level. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. So at this point, before I open the hearing, I need those persons who expect to be witnesses in this hearing to, at this time, identify, and we need to have our town clerk swear you as a witness. So if you could maybe show yourselves video-wise and... Does that include everybody who expects to testify in this particular hearing? Okay, Ms. Gibson, I will ask you to do your duties.
Okay, if everyone who is planning to be sworn in could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing other than truth?
I do.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Ms. Gibson. Just before I open the hearing, I guess I could confirm that persons who indicated they would speak during this hearing were, in addition to town staff, were Beth Blackman, Paul Flaherty, and also Talton Earp. Are those three people with us? I believe they are, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And maybe I could ask all of you upfront if you consent and accept that this is a virtual meeting that you're participating in, see?
Yes.
I believe you'd all indicated, okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, at this point, I'm going to formally open this hearing and explain that actually this is not a hearing that is, is starting tonight. This was a hearing that was continued from our meeting in February, so this is a continuation of, of that hearing. And it is now formally reopened for further consideration and further information. And I will recognize, I believe, Mr. Trezenberg, are you taking the lead here, sir?
Yes, sir, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Go ahead and hopefully share my screen here. Yes, this case, CUDZ 2009 and CUP SB 2007, Pearl Street Town Homes was begun at our meeting, our second meeting in February, and carried over to tonight's meeting to work out some final conditions for the proposed rezoning. And so I have updated those here on the slide, they're also reflected and highlighted in your staff report, highlighted in yellow. And primarily, what we ended up doing was altering existing conditions five through eight. So one through four remain as they were before. Number five has now been written that the front facade of each townhouse unit will include at least three operable windows. At least the bottom sash of the window can be opened, in defining what operable means, as well as an entry door. Number six is that each townhouse group, defined as a building containing four to seven individual units, that two-thirds of those units in each group shall have a front porch that extends at least twelve feet across the front facade. Again, keeping in mind that these are probably in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty-four foot wide lots. Number seven, each townhouse group, defined as a building containing four to seven individual units, shall include at least two of the following siding types. So here, we call out the board and batten, horizontal lap siding and/or shake siding. There is still the, the other requirement that the eighteen inch is of, the water table is still required masonry as a minimum, so there could be more masonry as individual homeowners decide on upgrades. And then number eight, all townhouse units shall have a minimum point zero four six gauge vinyl siding. They've identified the Veraform Vortex Extreme Siding's North Ridge color palette or an equivalent approved by the planning director. We agreed on that language since we do not know at this point who the builder will be. And that the color variation between adjacent units shall be utilized, so we won't have the same color on each one. They were able to take some photographs of some existing townhomes that we had seen previously and got a digital artist to go ahead and kind of modify those. So you do see here, you know, these happen to have porches the whole way across. The twelve feet in these cases, I believe these are eighteen-foot units. So it would be at least two-thirds of the way across, if not the full length. You see there, they just went ahead and put in board and batten siding on the first floor, lap siding on the second, and shingles on the third, just as a, just as a standard, just to kind of show how that would be broken up, as well as committing to the darker colors that you see there. You also will see the eighteen-inch water table along the bottom of the units as well. So we did try to get these mocked up as close as possible to what the requirements do state. Here is that color palette, so again, when combining that with the previous pictures, we are looking at the primary siding being mostly in those bottom three rows with the, with the trim colors being primarily in the top row. And again, this is a, this is a known vinyl product that meets the point zero four six thickness and provides, I think, the color palette that the council was looking for. Again, we do have some, some language in there that if it's a different developer and they have a different equivalent product, that, that we in the planning department can approve a similar color palette if this particular one is not available. So we would, we believe that we can enforce that part well enough for y'all if it comes to that, that hopefully they'll be able to use this product, but if not, we do have that flexibility. And so that, I think, pretty well addresses how we tried to put in conditions that reference both the color... put in conditions that reference both the color and the provision of porches on these units. Those were the two primary concerns that were expressed at the previous meeting. Again, the developer staff are here to answer any questions, and we are here as well if you have any questions of us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, and we probably will get to the other person who will testify, but before I do that, I'll give the council a quick opportunity to pose any questions to you, starting maybe with Mr. Singleton.
Ladies and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the developers working with staff to refine the conditions, and also to make a presentation here of some what may very well end up out there on Pearl Street. And so I appreciate the developers working with the staff to, to meet the, meet the request that the council had from the last meeting when we discussed this. I appreciate your cooperation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Vance, comments, questions?
I have nothing to add. I'll just second what Mr. Singleton has said already. The cooperation is appreciated, and the, and the elevations appear to be within the concepts and thought processes that we as a council are thinking about for that area. I appreciate the, just the way the the developers have worked with, with the town, and being patient and on both parties, and getting us something that I believe will be a, a very good product for that area.
Okay, thanks, sir. Ms. Behringer?
I don't have anything more to add. Just to repeat or to reiterate what they said, this is good to see this presentation, to have a better idea of what we're going to be looking at later on, and we appreciate the applicant's cooperation.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I want to thank developers for taking our feedback and input. I think it kind of crystallizes the vision a little bit closer. The only question I have, I guess, is for Mr. Trezenberg on item number six, where it says, building groups, four to seven townhome units, two thirds of each unit shall have a front porch extending at least 12 inches across from the facade. That, I'm not quite sure how that two thirds number works with four, five, six, and seven units. So I don't know if there needs to be some clarification just on for four, it means this, for five, for six, for seven, because two thirds doesn't go into any of those. But I like, I definitely see the merit in having variability, but I just want to, it seems like that'd be, it's kind of ambiguous.
So when we do have that kind of requirement, we observe that as a minimum. So in the case of four units, two does not meet that minimum, but three does. So it'd be three out of four, four out of five, and four out of six.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'll go along with everybody else's head. I think this is going to be a great opportunity. It's no secret I support doing all these things for the, the older area or historic area of Garner. I think it's going to be a great opportunity. I can see these things swinging all the way around. I appreciate the developers working with our staff, listening to us. I think we can work through this thing and see some great things happen in the next few years, and I think we're on top of it. And Towton, Mr. Towton there, are you at Jones's Lunch in Clayton? I'm seeing that sign behind us, since I'm familiar with that area. You back tonight, or just?
No, that's a good question, but I was lucky enough that I had a buddy remodel the front of it, and they called me up to, to actually see if I wanted the front window, and I did, and I'm in my basement right now. So I'm, I'm lucky to have the, the original one in my basement right now.
But that adds a lot of credibility to you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Parts, but maybe Gray and I appreciate it, and as he travels around the world, great lunch places, and that is a historical thing, so I'm glad you got it. Having set all that aside, I think we've got some great opportunities here, and I'm looking forward to moving forward to taking the historic downtown to another level, and I think we've got some great opportunities here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. And so, Mr. Trezenberg, I think that's all the questions for you. Did you intend to introduce the next person, or should I recognize one of the three? Not sure what order they expect to go in.
I would probably recommend just starting with Ms. Blackman to see if she has anything to add, and she can defer to the others in her group.
Okay. So be it. Ms. Blackman, I'll recognize you at this time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of y'all's kind words, kind feedback. We did work with staff to try to come up with something that incorporated everything we had discussed at our previous meeting, and quickly were able to, Mr. Earp had somebody who was able to work us up some mockups, so y'all actually have something to look at, because I understand it's much easier to visualize something when you can see it versus necessarily having a whole list of conditions. So we appreciate your feedback, and we're here for any questions. I don't know if Mr. Flaherty or Mr. Earp have anything we want to say. We enjoyed, we appreciated our discussion last time. I think we covered a lot of it last time. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think you're right. And council, if it's okay, rather than ask individual questions, I'll see, go ahead and hear from the other two, and then we will proceed with a round of questions. So let's see, Mr. Flaherty, are you next? You need to unmute, sir.
Sorry about that. Just I wanted to ditto what Beth said, and thank the, the town staff working with us and helping us maneuver through all this, and appreciate you guys listening to our presentation and giving us good feedback, and we, we are very excited about taking this to the next step.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Earp?
Yeah, I'll just elaborate on that. That's the same thing. I want to thank everybody for, actually, the feedback last time was perfect. When I was able to meet my graphic artist, I kind of just said exactly what Mr. Dellinger wanted. He wants some, some chairs on the front porch. We made sure we had a couple of those on there for you. And Mr. Singleton, the same thing. We wanted to see the natural visual of it, and it actually helps us too. So all the feedback was awesome. Relayed that to him, sat down, and we were very lucky, lucky to get it this fast, and we were glad to be able to bring it to you. And we appreciate everything you guys are doing for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'll let council have some questions if they have any. By the way, since you've mentioned chairs on the front porch, can I, can I request that you put a rocking chair out there somewhere?
We can make, we can make that happen now if we need to, Mr. Mayor.
That's quite right. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask that. So, council, I'm gonna see if you have questions for any one of these three persons, and I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
I don't have any questions for these folks. They've done a great job. I do have one for you, though. Where did it say in your job description that you can request a rocking chair?
Well, obviously it doesn't, so that's the reason I withdrew that request, so, yes. Mr. Matthews, any questions or comments or?
Mayor, I appreciate that. I think I've said everything. This has been a great team, and and the, far as my fellow councilmen brought some great ideas. Gray and Damian on the last meeting we had, and they've responded well to it, at least that's my perception of this. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for historic downtown Garner. It's going to set a great precedence to clean up a lot of the housing down there, and bring new people in so they can be part of what's going on down that way, as well as all the amenities downtown there and support that, and whether it's a baseball field, or going down to one of our restaurants, or, or the new things that's coming in. It's a great opportunity, and I'm glad we all collected and worked together on this. And as long as we do that, you know, everybody's going to be ahead in the game for us. So, congratulations. Thanks for coming back with what you did.
Okay, and let me see, Mr. Dellinger, any questions of these three?
Just thank you all for taking the feedback from the entire council on this. Just a couple of questions. One, I think the topography of the the site is going to lend itself well to a really nice looking staggered presentation on that street. The only other question I had was, are these going to be built with crawl spaces or on, on a slab? Or do you not know yet?
So townhomes are typically slab. We have committed to the masonry front edge, and so that, that typically wraps down to the, to the actual ground, so you don't really see the slab in the front. But most townhome construction is, is done on slab.
I just want to, I think, yeah, with those porches, the slight elevation and the height, and kind of the step up to the, would look, is going to look really great. I'm excited. I'm excited.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the picture really reflected the step up. We did talk about the finished floors being slightly higher than the back of the curb, and so that's is basically built in that there's going to be like a step up to the porch and step up.
It's going to look even better than those pictures. I'm pretty sure of that. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Singleton?
Again, I want to thank the, the developers and your folks working with you, Ms. Blackman, if you're willing us to take our thoughts and concerns and address them in the new conditions, and also in the elevations. Appreciate it. The, as we know, the existing housing stock there has got quite a few years on it, some age, and when that goes down, this goes up, it's going to dramatically change how that looks. So thank you for your cooperation. Look forward to, well, first, let's vote on this first, and then if it passes, I look forward to what happens.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. I believe all council members had a chance to, to weigh in.
Mr. Mayor, I have not.
Excuse me, Mr. Vance. My apologies.
Yes, sir. I have a very long dissertation to make here. Great, great response to, to the development team. I know that it was a short notice, and you responded well, and everyone else has said everything I was going to say, so I'm finished. Thank you very much, y'all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Well, at this point, I don't believe there are any other persons to give testimony. Am I right on that, Mr. Trezenberg, as far as you know?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, council, unless you have other questions or comments, I believe we're ready to entertain a motion on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to the Pearl Street Town Homes, I move that the town council accept, accept staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward comprehensive plan detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as their own. I therefore move further the town council ordinance 2020-5016 approving the request CD-Z-20-09 as it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow household living that are attracting younger families with children, as well as older residents, to maintain private, smaller outdoor spaces, and allow the development of an appropriate density of housing in the area in which it is located.
Second.
Thank you, Singleton. Motion properly made and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Let's see, this is on the conditional use zoning, right?
Yes, sir.
And we'll vote separately, I guess, on the conditional use permit. Okay. Any other comments, questions for council? If there aren't any, I will ask the town clerk to call the roll, and if you favor this motion, please indicate it by a vote of aye. If you oppose, no.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, and that is approved, and Mr. Trezenberg, is there any other items to share at this point on the the further portion of this, of this hearing?
No, sir. I believe you can proceed directly to the, the conditional use permit.
Okay, that's what I was planning to do, so thank you, sir. All right. Council, are you ready for a motion on the conditional use permit? We'll hear you at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council accept the staff statements regarding the plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as their own, and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria, Section 3.14. D, and therefore approve CUP-XB-20-07, the Pearl Street Town Homes, with the six conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared, excuse me, that will be prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews. Motion properly made, so here ain't no further comments or questions. I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Again, if you favor the motion, please vote aye. If you oppose the motion, please vote no.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, as you can hear by the unanimous vote, the motion passes, and thank you, council. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Trezenberg, and of course, also the those representing the development here this evening. Obviously, we've had to operate in a virtual circumstance, but may I say to our guests who are here, I'm hopeful that we can do an in-person ribbon cutting over there when the time is right for that. So maybe we won't have to do that in a virtual manner. We'll look forward to that. Thank you all. Okay, I believe we're ready to move to item number two under Public Hearings. Let me check my watch here. Okay. So this, this is an item that will be presented by Mr. Franks, our budget manager, and an opportunity for, excuse me, for public feedback on our FY 2022 budget and also the CIP bond program. So, Mr. Franks, I will recognize you at this time, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor said, I'm here tonight to provide the public an opportunity to get a preview of the upcoming bond referendum that is currently anticipated for November of 2021, as well as the current FY 22 operating projection to give them a feel of what might be coming up next year. So I'm going to start with the bond referendum. All right. So as I mentioned, this is the November 2021 bond referendum. This is the current anticipated date. So some brief history, the town is prepared for a November 2021 referendum for an extended period of time. We've had several meetings to discuss the potential projects and the funding allocation of the, the referendum. Staff presented a proposal at council's recent retreat and special bond work session, where we received feedback. We used that feedback to prepare a revised scenario, which we now think is going to be the baseline for upcoming referendum. And staff has also consulted with bond council to determine the appropriate categories for various projects, which you'll see. So you can see, here's the broad summary of the bonds. So there's the various categories summarized on the left-hand side, so you can see parks and transportation, general government, stormwater, capital renewal. So parks in the five-year, full 10-year program has about a $63 million requirement, transportation, almost a $70 billion requirement, general government, $11.9 million, stormwater, 3.4, capital renewal, 4.9, and that's funded from a variety of different sources. So the general funds is 4.9 million, bond proceeds, and that is from the existing bond from 2013 of 2.4. The future bond proceeds, that would be what voters would vote on in November, is the 71.8 million impact fees. In this case, it's primarily fee in lieu of parklands, so money that developers provide the town in lieu of building a park is 4 million, power bill, money the town gets from the state of 4, 6.4, partner agency funding, primarily from Campo Lap for transportation projects of 16.7, other, which is primarily motor vehicle fees, but also miscellaneous items, and then unknown funding source, and this would indicate delta, the amount that the town would need to be able to fully fund the referendum, or to fully fund the CIP. Then getting into the actual bond referendum in terms of exactly what would be funded, so in the parks category, and this gets into what voters would actually be voting on, the parks category would be 35.5 million dollars. We'd have park development, 21 million. We'd have park development, 21 million. Total funding of 25 is allocated for the development of Yergin and Meadowbrook. So those are two properties the town purchased recently that would be developed as part of this project, or at least partially develops. So you have the $21 million in bond fees and then an additional four in P and Lu. So being able to fund a good amount of park construction there. Park rehabilitation of 2.5 million, so rehabbing existing park facilities. Greenways of $10 million, so expanding on the town's greenway system. And then land acquisition of $2 million, that'd be purchasing new land as the town continues to grow. It's going to be necessary to build and expands the park system to meet the needs of future citizens. So that money would allow us to buy park lands in other areas. And then do want to note that additional funding will ultimately be required to fully develop both parks. We are still working through the final master planning process of the Meadowbrook and Yergin properties. There's not a final decision on that, but the total cost to fully develop both parks would be more than the $25 million that I mentioned. So street and sidewalks, mother bond category, we'd have $27 million. We'd have $15 million for streets and roads. These would be the big street and road projects. So Joan Sausage Road near Amazon would be one of the major projects that you would notice here. And additional funding would also be available to maximize opportunities. The town has the ability to provide matching funding using the Campo Lap process. So using federal dollars that pass through the state to be able to, you know, get a 50-50 match, 80-20 match, depending on how much the town's want to put up in the overall scoring process for that year. So it's a chance to maximize available resources and to meet critical needs there. $0.8 million for transit. $8.25 million to build out this sidewalk infrastructure within the town. So the town has already done a lot of work to build out that infrastructure. And this will continue to allow the town to implement the master plan that has been developed and additional projects that have been identified. Stormwater of $2.95 million. So as the town continues to age and some of the older developments begin to experience infrastructure issues, this would allow the town to address some of those items. And then the final category is public safety services and general government. And that is $9.3 million. So Fire Station 5 is included in this, and that was mentioned earlier, I believe, Councilmember Matthews. And there would be a needed fire station in the high-growth area. And this would be the town's match contribution, working with Wake County EMS, which would pick up 30%. Then land acquisition, which is anticipated for a future public works sites. And then a shooting range for the police department at $300,000. I did want to note, we talked about this, there is the potential impact of a stimulus that might have an impact on these projects. So there are a variety of different things that the town needs to work through that may have an overall impact on a couple of these projects. In particular, stormwater might be eligible cost. But that is something that we just wanted to note and want to note to council. With that, I'll take any questions from council or citizens on the bond referendum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franks. Good, good reporting, good information. And council by now is is getting very familiar with the categories and the expenditures that we anticipate. It's an ambitious program and one that I believe is much needed to move our town forward on on any number of these areas for sure. But at this point, I recognize the various council members for comments and or questions further. I'll start with Ms. Behringer at this time.
I have no questions right now.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two, two comments. One is, I think is most important, as we've all discussed this, that we lay it all out to the public to see. Because, as you mentioned, it is a very ambitious bond project. But with all the growth we've got going on, as representatives, elected representatives of the town, we need to make sure they thoroughly understand what they're voting for. And 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 this good presentation like this lets them know. And secondly, hopefully, we will be able to get this into the November timeframe. I don't know if we had any updates on that. I know we talked about it a little bit later. But I think it's going to be a great program. And again, if we share with the public what we want to do, what it's going to cost, so they thoroughly understand it and they see the results of that, if they vote to support it, I think we'll be on board with this. And I think Mr. Singleton raised a good point of that, that one of the previous bond referendums, we did not sometimes do our due diligence. But I think we've got a good handle on this one and we're going to represent it well. And I think all the council want to support it. But I guess my question again is, how are we looking at this point as far as November? Any updates as far as the voting?
I'm not sure if if Mr. Dickerson has an update. I was in a meeting with some mayors just recently. And at that point, there was nothing specific to report at this time. Obviously, you know, towns that have districts would appear to be impacted more because of the lack of the census information. But many towns, as you know, across North Carolina, don't vote district-wide their all that large voting. So yet to be, yet to be resolved. Maybe other council members have other information at this point in time. But I think there's, that it's still out there, but nothing definitive that I have heard at this point in time. So.
Did you want me to respond any further to that, Mr. Mayor?
If you have anything you can add, Mr. Dixon.
Yeah, I have not heard anything except that right now, I don't think there's going to be a push to make everybody go to the same time period, later time period. I believe those of us that do not have districts will be allowed to stay in November. That's not definitive, because the legislature can change that if they want to. But in a group of towns that are similar to us as far as how we do our elections and some that may have referendums, we're all kind of grouping together and advocating that we be allowed to stay in November as long as it remains cost-effective for us. And so we're coordinating how we may do our early voting and those type of things, days and times and those type of things, which will help us.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Matthews, if you're ready, I will move to another council member. Did you have anything else, sir?
No, sir, those are my two concerns and appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for, Mr. Dickerson, for elaborating on that. It sounds like at least quite a few of us are working together to try to achieve that goal. And at this point, it's looking promising.
Yes, okay, Mr. Singleton?
No, excuse me, no questions at this time.
Okay, and Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
No questions, only comment, just for public's benefit. Councils invest a lot of time in these numbers and these projects and also learning from the last bond referendum to make this one even better and an even bigger, bigger and better investment in the future.
Thanks, sir. And I want to thank all of our council members for your work through this process. It's certainly not finished by any means, but given certainly good due consideration to it all. And, Mr. Franks, it's fair to say that this is not the, obviously, the last time there will be some public information shared on this topic moving forward.
Yes, sir, I would agree with that.
Okay. So at this point, we're not taking any votes tonight. I believe we're receiving this as information and getting information to the public. And also, if council has any other questions, Mr. Franks, an opportunity to do that. Any any final comments you want to make, Mr. Franks?
I was going to highlight the operating budget as well. So I was going to have a separate presentation on that, but otherwise, no comments on the bond, the bond section.
Okay, yes, go right ahead and move to that if you will. I'm sorry, I was trying to rush you along there.
No problem. So in addition to the bond referendum, staff has done a lot, council has worked a lot on trying to tie the multi-year operating budget that the town has put together into the CIP models and the bond model to make sure that the town overall is in good financial health. Obviously, a bond is going to have a multi-year impact in terms of the the operating budget. If you're going to build something, you have to maintain it. If you're going to build a new facility, you might have to staff it. So we try to take a look at both at the same time. So I wanted to provide an update on both tonight's. So this is a brief overview. We're going to review the recent budget history, review the current year budget, and then the multi-year forecast. So the recent history, the town has done to utilize the multi-year model, as I mentioned. And this has allowed the town to stabilize the budget. We identified what we considered at that point to be a structural deficit in FY 2021. Where expenditures were outpacing revenues at a good pace. We've been able to stabilize that for the most part. There's still some challenges ahead and some difficult decisions to make, but we're in a much better position. As I note here. And one review, so this is the most recent budget year. There was significant uncertainty with COVID-19. This town operates on July 1 through June 30, this school year. So as we were putting together the budget in the May or the March-April timeframe, COVID, which is starting to hit, and really take a, have an impact on the nation. So we were operating in a situation where we weren't fully aware of what was going to happen. So based on that, we went with a fairly conservative approach in terms of what we thought was going to happen on the revenue side. We also included a tax rate that was a three and a half cent increase above the net revenue neutral rate of 46.21 for $100 of assessed value. What that basically means is Wake County reassessed all the property within Wake County and figured out exactly how much the town would need to charge in terms of a tax rate, not generate any additional funding. So the tax rate was above that amount. And then the budget did include funding for various items. So we had public safety initiatives for fire and police. We implemented a pay equity study that was referenced earlier for the fire department and for the rest of the town that caught the town up in terms of pay. We included recurring funding for perform, which is the public facilities repair and maintenance. So the town has been looking at this program for a while. And it is designed to funds capital needs or basically operating needs of capital items. So kind of once we build something, this is how we maintain it. So we put a dedicated resource there so that we can continue to maintain the assets that we have as we build new assets. And we also included one-time funding to prepare for the November 2021 bond referendum. So this is getting back to council's comments on getting better prepared for the upcoming referendum. We're doing work right now to figure out exactly how much things are going to cost, do an additional analysis to make sure that we have correct estimates and are doing our due diligence on all the projects that are in the referendum. Current forecast, staff is currently projecting a balance of approximately $500,000 FY 21, which is the current year. And that's based on one-time COVID funding and several other factors. Sales taxes performed significantly better than staff originally projected. Expenditures have also been down compared to where we thought they were going to be. So there's a couple of different items there. The baseline forecast for FY 22 does include a small but manageable shortfall of approximately $300,000. And several factors impact this. There were additional costs associated with the pay equity analysis at the town performs. Those costs increased after council adopted it. There was a new IT position for public safety added in mid-year, so that has a recurring cost. We have significantly lower interest income revenue, so there was a lot of good news in FY 21. But the current interest rates for the town's investments are significantly lower as they would be for most folks just based on interest rates set by the Federal Reserve. And real estate estimates based, or were lower based primarily on COVID-19. So Wake County has assumed a decrease in personal property due to COVID for all localities. Garner made up for that in large part based on Amazon, but the overall balance or the overall amount that we had prior was a decrease. And then the original forecast included 500 homes and only 389 were CO'd or basically put into the tax base. So based on that, here's the five-year forecast the town provides. So on the top, you can see the various revenue categories and the total revenues. So FY 21 and 21 projection, and then 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26. So you can see total revenues. Expenditures, and then the balance for shortfall. So you'll note that the shortfall here is a little bit more than what I talked about previously. And that's because it includes assumptions for new personnel, increases in perform. And then it also includes increases in the future for new items. So for the new fire station, we have additional personnel costs in FY 24 projected. We have a new park, our new parks, and the projected operating cost began in '25. We've also programmed in a tax increase in FY 24 to account for those costs. Again, these are manageable shortfalls, higher than we'd like to see them. But given that we have some assumptions, some new personnel, again, there'll be some challenging decisions, but we think it'll be manageable. And staff has generally tried to be conservative with our estimates. So hopefully, as time goes on, we'll be in a better position. As we note, the current forecast is significantly better than prior years. As I mentioned, we were looking at shortfalls larger than that in the past, just looking at baseline, not including new items. So we're in a better position financially. And we desire to obviously incorporate public input into future year projections. So this is the opportunity for public to provide input based on what we've just presented and the bond referendum in terms of what we should be including in the multi-year budget to make sure that we're accounting for their their thoughts and their desires. So with that, I'll take any questions from council.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Franks. And on this, on this portion of his presentation, council, any questions? I'll start with Mr. Dellinger.
I don't think I have a question. I feel like a comment that I think I had mentioned during another session where real concerns about this structural shortfall that keeps popping up and that the growth is not paying for itself is basically what this model is showing. And some of the projections for these expenditures going forward in administration and building inspections, which are costs we know we, these are functions we know we need as a town and will continue to need as we grow. I don't think they're projected properly, given our growth trajectory. And so when we get into budget season and we start having these budget sessions, I'm going to keep pushing for, or start pushing even harder to get those actuals five years back so that we can see where our model has and hasn't worked relative to our growth, so that we can project out a better, the town's financial health is really good. We, that's what our consultants say, that's what our finance folks say, and it is. But these structural deficits give me concern that our models aren't quite as tuned as they need to be. So as we get into budget discussions this year, I'm going to be pushing more for back data and us looking at some of these assumptions we have in our models. So that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Singleton?
As I mentioned last week in our council work session on this, Michael, thank you for the information. And I appreciate your assistance in putting together the information in particular on the bond, proposed bond referendum.
Okay, I will recognize Ms. Behringer for comments, questions?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Matthews?
Again, thank you for the update. Those are some good, great numbers. And as we look forward, especially all the information on the bottom, and it's keeping us aware of what we're going to be dealing with here. So thank you again for that update. Thank you.
And Mr. Vance?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Franks, any other information or closing comments?
No, sir, that's it for me.
All right, well, again, thank you for sticking with us on this. And we've still got a little ways to go, but we appreciate your diligent work. And look forward to probably hearing from you again, but in the not-too-distant future, sir. So I guess we can excuse you for this evening anyway, probably. So we'll catch you the next time, but thanks again for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, we're approaching the nine o'clock hour. We still have a little ways to go before we get there. The next item is under new and old business. And we have a a presentation from DFI. and we have a, a presentation from DFI. Would you prefer to take a about a 10-minute recess at this time? Or if you want to get into the first item under new and old business, I'll be happy to move on to that. Anybody have a strong preference? Okay, hearing none, I tell you what, let's, if we could take maybe a five-minute recess at this time, thereabouts, and then come back and we'll receive information on those next two items and keep moving right along. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, so I'll declare us to be in recess for five to seven minutes, and we'll come back with the first item under new and old business. Okay, welcome back, counsel. And for those of you who are watching through various social media means perhaps, we have just returned from our recess, and we're going to continue now with our agenda under the item of new and old business. And at this juncture, we will receive a presentation in regards to Development Finance Initiative. And I believe we have two persons with us this evening. I'm not sure who's presenting first, but I have Mr. Matt Crook and also Rory Dowling. So if either or both of you gentlemen are with us, we will, we will hear from whoever wants to go first.
And Mr. Mayor, I would add that we have Mari here, so if she wants to do any type of kickoff.
Exactly.
Downtown development manager.
Yes, very good.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll be very brief. So our solicitation for the downtown opportunity development site has closed. And so we've just invited Matt Crook and Rory Dowling from the Development Finance Initiative back to give you guys an update on what to expect now that our solicitation is closed out. So with that, I'll hand it over to Matt.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Just wanted to check on something to make sure you see my screen.
We do. I do, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We'll try and keep this message short and sweet, but we did want to take that opportunity to let you all know that we've closed the solicitation for the Garner Downtown Development Site. We did have quite a few conversations with folks. We had three responses that came in. As you can see, this is kind of a timeframe. We opened the solicitation in October. This is somewhat challenging sometimes at the end of the year, can be a very busy time for folks. And so we actually closed the solicitation in February. Are we, after speaking with a number of folks, and we had three that responded. We're taking time now to review those proposals with staff. We're looking to provide kind of a detailed analysis to council and assist the town in selecting a development partner. We anticipate in Q2, likely, probably the May timeframe, the town and development partners will start to negotiate and execute an MOU. This is where you'll start to actually get into the details and the terms and, you know, probably reviewing a development agreement at that time. Wanted to give you a high-level idea of what that timeframe looks like closing out since we've been in solicitation. I'll just mention shortly about our outreach process. So if you can see, this is like an inverted funnel here or funnel. We published the solicitation, so we went out. DFI has a solicitation webpage. The town of Garner, I think, published on their bids webpage. This solicitation was picked up by the Triangle Business Journal. We had a number of folks that, you know, received the solicitation that we might not have been directly reaching out to, but that they came into contact with it. In total, DFI targeted 35 developers and additional 20 firms. These additional firms, they call architects, GCs, brokers. They might not be directly responding, but they have contacts and folks that they work with that they were also sharing this solicitation with. So over 55 different firms were reached out to. A lot in the Triangle area, you know, a handful, probably five to 10 in the Garner area, some in Charlotte, and then others outside of the state as well. Just folks that DFI has had contact with. And honestly, the size and scale of this project, folks that would be looking to do a project this size in a town like Garner. And in total, we received three developer responses. So you can kind of see how, as time went on, you know, one of the, one of the number-one things that we heard from folks who did not respond was they just had too much on their plate at this moment. So the folks that did respond are looking to grow, looking to expand either into Garner or even, you know, look to kind of grow their, this is kind of in their sweet spot, so to speak, of development, and so they were looking to grow their portfolio. So next steps, we've already, the first, you know, column here, we've already started working on this, compiling the responses. We've started pulling out relevant questions and followed up with the developers that have submitted with additional questions. Once we have received those, and that's the target date of next Friday to receive those is the deadline, we'll start to evaluate the proposals, contact references, et cetera, and then we'll work with staff to communicate the findings and then assist them with making a recommendation to council. Depending on staff's recommendation, we may look to do interviews. This is a good way for council to get to know the development partner they could be working with, if they don't already. And so this is, this might be a, I guess, something that the town staff recommend to council as well at a later date. How we'll evaluate these responses, you know, it's within the actual solicitation so developers know what we'll be looking at. But, you know, high-level quality of the proposal and submission requirements, how well it aligns with guiding public interest. These are interests that are endorsed by the council. Qualifications and experience of the teams, references. So how, you know, are these folks spoken highly of? And then their current capacity of the team to execute within a proposed timeline. I'll stop there before kind of getting into speaking at a high level about the responses and the folks that responded and just ask, you know, if there's any questions, we can take them now about the process.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Counsel, I'll just ask if there are any persons who have questions rather than necessarily go around the loop at this point, and then we'll let him continue if there aren't any.
No questions.
Just one question. I, you might be going to cover this later. I have three responses. How many were in our local area versus outside of our area? And I don't know how you would define outside of a area, but far as local potential candidates versus others?
I think I'll answer that question in our next section, but one out of the three is located in the Triangle area in Raleigh. So that is as local as we got. We did reach out to local folks that either haven't developed in Garner or are developing in Garner, other business interests and investors, with mixed conversations. But, you know, this is a scaled project that kind of requires a little bit more development experience, especially with the private-public-private partnership experience. That's one of the qualifications within the response. So there might have been some, well, I just can't, I can't speak for the folks that did not respond, but, you know, we did do our best to reach out to local folks, local Garner development folks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hook, by counsel?
No questions.
Okay, hearing none, I believe you can proceed, Matt.
Okay, but I will say, you know, Mari, John, and the folks at the Economic Development Department, you know, did a great job of reaching out themselves to folks and funneling interested candidates or interested parties to us that we had ongoing conversations with. So this is definitely not just DFI reaching out, but I felt like there was a good support there from town staff and conversations that they were having and folks that they had been in touch with over the years were able to connect with us through this process as well. The first response, and these are in alphabetical order, no, you know, no ranking or anything like that, is from a group out of Baltimore, Maryland called a Quest Group. This is a minority young group. They have experience in Henderson, North Carolina, off of 85, north of Durham, and they're working on this project here, the Henderson Tobacco Warehouse. Their proposal came in, and it's actually, they looked at the plans and, you know, what their response included was condos of retail. So these are multifamily, four-cell units. They're designating about 26 units. They include the tabletop parking behind the structure. What's interesting about their response is that they, you know, closed Purvis Street as a pedestrian street. They have these removable ballards where it looks like you can kind of add them and have more of a street festival or something like that as needed. But, you know, that was kind of a unique take on kind of extending their project here into Purvis Street a little bit. The second group that responded was City Platt. Folks might be familiar with City Platt. They're based in Raleigh. Their development team that they submitted with includes Bobbit Construction, New City Design, and PAPX Design Group, all great, you know, parts of the team. Their experience, you know, they've been working at the distillery at Ran Mill, but also Cityport Condos in Durham and NC State Housing. And that's the picture you see here, which is a very similar size and scale. This is probably one of the reasons I pulled this out of their response was this is a very similar scale of project that this downtown development opportunity presents. They presented apartments over retail, so about 12,000 to 17,000 square feet of retail, 58, or sorry, 48 to 52 residential units. You can see that their take on the building actually extends down Purvis Street. So it kind of includes additional units there that would, that would make kind of more of an L shape. And their parking here, their parking solution includes about 123 of these parking spaces with a tabletop. The final group is Lansing Melborne. Peter Floats and Kent Gregory are the two primary principals here. Their development team is built form architecture. Kaufman Lynn is the construction and JLL. Again, you know, kind of a full-bodied development team here. They're based in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, but they do have experience in the Carolinas with a project called VITA in Kannapolis, Market Street Lofts in Concord, but they also have experience in Michigan as well. Similar to City Platt, they look at, including apartment, apartments that kind of go down Purvis Street. They have about 600 square feet of retail on Main Street, 50 residential units, 74 parking spaces on the elevated structure. So that's just one part of the parking, I believe. But one thing that you'll notice here that it is, I believe, just two stories over the retail, so three-story building. I will add that, you know, these are concepts at this point. They're not fully baked designs. These are just their first stab at it. And as we go through the process, you know, the staff and council can definitely work through any questions that they have with the developers as we go through, especially once the developer has been selected. You know, understanding and kind of digging into the design components. These are just, you know, renderings that are more informational, not really design concepts at this point. So please just take that for kind of an idea of what, what they were thinking when they submitted. Any questions about the three folks that have responded? Happy to pick any questions about any part of the presentation at this moment.
Okay, I'll sort of poll the council on this one to give everybody a shot at. Phil, I see you there. I'll start with you, sir.
I find it interesting that they all, at least two of them are looking, going down Purvis Street, maximizing the opportunities for that project there. And I like what's been presented thus far. I know there's a long ways to go with it, but all three of them look great. But it's interesting, they're going, a couple were looking at Purvis Street to take it a step farther, which is very, very good and more profitable and all the way around for everybody.
Okay, thanks, sir. Ms. Behringer? I couldn't hear you, but, okay, nothing.
I'm sorry, did it again. I don't have any questions at this time.
All right, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I found it interesting. Two of the parties submitted multifamily apartments between 48 and 52. One did the 26 condos. The square footage of the retail, of course, is substantially different. Two of them, one 6,000, one 7,300. 12,000 to 17,000 square foot of retail. Is this because they're looking to come in down Purvis Street? Is it two stories higher? Can you explain? That's a heck of a lot of difference, double square footage in retail.
Yeah, I do believe it's part of their ideas either to, and this is why their multifamily unit count is from 48 to 52. But then their submission, the area going down Purvis Street, they may either continue retail on the first floor or include, I think, some more walk-up type units that are on Purvis Street. I think that's still to be defined by their design.
Okay, and the, the number of stories in the proposed height of the building of stories, are they all very, are they all similar, all three stories? Or was it, was it one any higher than that?
The City Platt, I believe, was four stories. And so was the Quest Group. I believe it was only LMG that was three stories.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was, I was, I'm counting them when I'm looking at pictures, looking at the elevations, and I know elevation sometimes may not be accurate, so I just wanted to find that out. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Mr. Dallinger?
Yeah, one broad question, but I'll start with my comments. The, you know, it's the scale of that City Platt building is massive. But what's interesting about at least the mock-up they've done is they've widened the sidewalk. I don't know these are all preliminary, but that allows for that sort of more, more walking space and greenery. It's kind of an interesting design. I don't know how you're going to do first floor retail down Purvis with that incline, but it's an amazing scale of building. My other question is more general. In your conversation with these developers and even some of the ones that ended up not submitting, what were sort of the expectations or conversations around the transaction of the land and the financing of the tabletop parking?
Yeah, and some of that we're getting additional details on. LMG provided in their response kind of the cost of land that they anticipated. Others either anticipate either kind of a sell of the land that's kind of, I don't know, lower the market value, or maybe it's a loan structure. We're still getting some questions back on that, so that's part of our questions to some of the teams. But I believe it's only LMG that kind of responded with the cost of land. The parking structure, that's a good question. I do believe, you know, in the conversations I had with folks, this was definitely something.
I do believe, you know, in the conversations I had with folks, this was definitely something that was the big sticking point for folks. They would probably be looking to do some type of partnership with the town. I think it's all going to be dependent on what is the final parking solution? If there's any shared parking resources available? What is the right size and scale? And also the cost of the parking structure? So all of that kind of comes into play with what would be asked by the developer for the town and how that partnership would be structured.
Yeah, because the city public in particular, just given the amount of retail square footage and all those residential units, I don't, it's hard for me to visualize how even with the tabletop, there's enough parking there. So I guess, I know these conversations are ongoing, and I don't know if you need more guidance from the council on the tabletop parking or if we've not made it. I was under the impression that we had sort of understood that we would assume a significant amount of the cost of the construction of that because it serves multiple needs. And I don't know if that's being communicated or if we need to revisit that and think about that again as a group and what our approach was. So I don't know how clear that was for you guys or for the developer or for council. So I don't know, again, I don't know if that's something we need to talk about again as a group, just for clarity's sake.
Yeah, we did.
That was something, yeah, go ahead, Rory.
I was going to say, we did make it clear that the town was willing to talk about participating in the parking, and that was something that came up in all of our conversations and courses. And so, you know, we didn't say any certain amount. We didn't say that there was a finite structure that had been determined or approved yet, but all developers that we spoke with understood that there was a likelihood of public participation on the parking structure.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Vance, questions, comments, sir?
Well, I have no questions at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just add a comment.
Yes.
I have some concerns that a four-story building would be a bit overwhelming for the surrounding area down there. I may be proven wrong, but I'd like to have that statement in the comments because that's a pretty tall building considering the buildings surrounding it are not that tall. We want it to blend. We want it to certainly to fit the space that's there, but we don't want it to overwhelm.
Okay. And Mari, Hal, I'd be interested to know if you have any other or any observations regarding this presentation and what you and some of your folks feel about this information.
So Matt and Rory are going to come to DGA on April 1st, once we have had a chance to review the, do the staff recommendations and work with them evaluating. So they have gotten kind of a brief update, sort of, you know, on par with what y'all have gotten. We're really pleased with what we've gotten, a lot like what Matt said. You know, we weren't sure, we did what we could to really reach out to all of the local folks that have expressed interest over the years. We weren't sure because of the scale of the project that was going to be, you know, ultimately of interest to them. So I think kind of the results, you know, bore out what we expected, but I think the folks that did apply are really great. I think you guys recall City Platt is actually invested in downtown right now. They're working on renovating the former Alco Cabinetry space. So, you know, we're pleased to see them apply as a local applicant. And then the projects that the other two included in their solicitation were really interesting. I know at least one of them, I think LMG has done work in other Main Street communities, so they're pretty familiar. So, you know, I've seen some of the projects that they've worked on, both with Main Street communities and with DFI, has been a great, a great sign to me, you know, that these are high-quality candidates. And I know, you know, when you first see that there are three responses, I know there have been some questions about that, you know, whether or not three is the right number and, you know, talking with Matt and Rory, them saying three is actually a really good number to get because it gives you enough to kind of work, you know, to look at different options, but it's not so much that you're trying to really, you're having to spend a lot of time paring down what's the best option for this. So we were, you know, really interested to see that they kind of went, you know, a couple of applicants went down Purvis Street. That wasn't something we were anticipating, but I think it would be an interesting option. And, you know, just seeing the tabletop parking included, I think it's going to be great for downtown. I'm pleased to hear that, you know, council is still, you know, I think, open to considering public participation in that. So, yeah, overall, I would say that, you know, both staff and DGA so far are really pleased with the process and have really appreciated Matt and Rory's, you know, guidance in this, and I'm looking forward to kind of digging into them more once we get some more information from the applicants.
Okay, thank you very much. I think you put this up earlier, Rory or Matt. Again, remind me very quickly what the next steps are, or at least the most, more immediate ones anyway.
Next steps are to, we're waiting on the developers to kind of come back with a list of questions that we've asked them specific to their proposals. Once we receive those questions, DFI will work on kind of compiling an analysis that we'll go over with the staff, with Mari and John. Once we've reviewed that, you know, we'll kind of put that together, and that'll go in front of the DGA board to get their input. Based on that, you know, there's probably going to be either a couple of different directions that are taken. Either there is a clear next step with kind of a recommendation to council, or there's some ideas of as far as how they might want to take it further by maybe speaking with or interviewing one or all of the candidates and then providing that information back to council or allowing council to interview as well. So that all is kind of happening, and Mari mentioned that DGA board meeting is the 1st of April. We anticipate being able to bring that information to you all in your mid-April meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I remember you putting that up, but forgotten some of the details there. So it sounds like the process is moving along. There are your sort of calendar updates there, so let me see here, March, April, and then, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, you know, Kathy brought up an interesting point, but just at the same time, we're trying to encourage growth in our area, and we had this discussion some time back. I know, Mr. Dellinger, when we looked at some commercial properties about building up versus out, real estate in Wake County and Garner is getting much more expensive, and I think we should be very cautious here. Let the potential developers, if they're willing to come in, historic downtown obviously is going to be changing by some of the things we voted on earlier with housing in that area, that I don't want to discourage somebody to want to come in and do something that's going to help be a positive thing for the town. I'd encourage us, don't give them limitations at this point. Let them bring to us what they foresee is going to be profitable for them and work for us, and plus, if we can work on the parking side, that's another positive. But let's don't give them any holdbacks or constraints at this point. Let them bring it forward so Matt and the team can look at it, say, well, here's what we got. This group is willing to develop and commit to this project, and here's where we're at. So, you know, I'm just saying, you know, I don't think we really need to say, well, here's your minimum, maximum qualification. Let them bring it to us, then that's where the whole team here will make that decision. And I'm just saying, let's be open to that. And yet I'm sensitive to historic downtown area, but things are changing over there just by what we voted on earlier tonight on housing. And if we want to keep that area productive and providing jobs as well as a good tax base for the town, we need to keep an open mind on that because real estate is getting expensive in Wake County, just saying.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other council members care to weigh in? Matt or Rory, do you have anything further for us at this point?
I just want to say, I think, you know, I'm glad that we got the, you know, three responses that we did. This, you know, is a very untraditional sized development. And when you're looking at multifamily, 30 to 50 units is very difficult to do if you're not the right developer. And that's one of the feedback that I got from many folks. They love Garner, they want to be in this area, but they also want to do 250, 300 units. And this particular opportunity area, well, you know, you just can't do 250 units here. So that, you know, when that's your development sweet spot, it's difficult to find the right developers. Most folks want to move to where, you know, if they're deploying capital, it is in large amounts, and they're kind of getting more bang for their buck. So I'm very pleased that we got the three developers that we did that responded. I've done a similar solicitation outside of Charlotte, very similar size-scale building. We didn't get any responses. And you would think the Charlotte market would have been driven to have more of this kind of infield development. So again, I'm very excited that, you know, you have three qualified candidates have responded. It's a good situation to be in for the council and for the community to kind of work through and pick the very best partner for the town to move forward with.
Okay, thank you, sir. I am enthused about, yeah, I don't know any of the three. I do travel in the Kannapolis area from time to time. My wife's from up that way. I may have to stop by and look at the VITA project up there. But at any rate, it's encouragement and it's a good start, I think, and a good place to be. So we look forward to hearing from you again after we move to the next steps, I guess. So unless there's anything else from council, I'll let these gentlemen get on with their evening, and we'll move to the next item. Anything else? Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good to see you. We'll look forward to the next time we meet, okay? All right, council, we are now at item two under new and old business. Chapter 160D adoption. We've spent some time on this before, so let's go back to it, and I'll recognize Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director.
Yes, good evening again, everyone. This item is coming back to you after having been deferred so that we could hopefully get the Pearl Street project through the old approval process. This is a text amendment package to adopt those modifications to the UDO necessary for compliance with the newly written Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes. Again, I'm just here to answer any questions. We did update the staff memo at the front of this particular item. Ms. Jones, town attorney, did a very thorough review for everything from grammar to citations, and we were very appreciative of that. And she has given her blessing on it as well. So we do have a motion and an ordinance attached for you. The motion is on the second page of that memo. But again, before that, if there are any outstanding questions regarding this, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Stacy and David have stayed on in case there's anything that they can provide as well. But other than that, I will leave it at that and see if you all have any questions.
Okay, and just for my edification, and I'll get to council. Let's see, the other item, I guess we vote on these separately, is that right? The fee schedule?
Yes, that would be correct. So yes, I apologize, I forgot that we had carried that over as well, so that did come to you late. But yes, your third item under this section of the agenda would be to adopt a fee schedule that would match the review processes that are now in the 160D version of the ordinance.
Okay. But for now, we're on the first item. So council, what say you to Mr. Trezenberg, Mr. Vance?
Oh, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
I do have one question, having sat on the committee and read many, many, many versions and revisions and dissections of this, so finally having the chance over the past couple weeks to look at a solid, non-fluid version. I have, one thing sort of jumped out to me in, you're going to have to scroll to it, Section 3.6.1 under rezoning slash map amendments on page 21. Let me know when you get to it, Jeff, so you can follow along. Under Section E, under Planning Commission, and then under Section 2 of that, where it says, "The Planning Commission shall examine the request and forward a written recommendation to Town Council remarking on consistency with all adopted plans within 60 days," and then says, "After 60 days have passed, the council can proceed towards a decision without the commission's report." Is that a mandated timeframe within the revision?
Actually, that is a, that has been a requirement for some time. That is in, that was put into state statutes, I know, at least back when I was still in Knightdale, so it's been at least five years ago. It's not a mandatory, but it is there. I believe the intent was that council can ask for something back, and a developer can approach you if they feel that something's being delayed unnecessarily, and it gives you that right, but it is not an automatic.
So I mean, I guess my question is more about the 60 days. Is that statutory?
Yes, yes. To my knowledge, the 60 days was specifically identified as the reasonable amount of time that the legislature thought a planning commission should act within.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Vance, did I get you yet?
Yes, you did. I said I had no questions.
Oh, excuse me, okay. Ms. Singleton?
No questions, mayor.
Okay. And Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
No questions, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one follow-up question just procedurally. So we'll vote on this, and then the work will continue on the other sections, and then that work is done, we vote on all of it again or only on the new parts? Because I know there'll be sections of this that are affected by the other sections that get revised. So the whole thing is going to come back again with the other pieces, is that right?
Yes, we will continue to be entertaining things that need to be addressed in the 160D sections if something else were to come up later. And in talking with Ms. Jones, I think when it does come around the next time, we'll actually do a wholesale kind of repeal and replacement, whereas this one, we're treating more as a true amendment.
Gotcha, yeah, because there's just so many little needles that come across different sections, so, okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've caught everybody. Jeff, did you want us to vote on this portion, or did you want to go in and present on the other one? I guess it doesn't matter to you necessarily, huh?
No, it really, it really doesn't. Again, we presented the fee schedule changes at the last meeting. Nothing has changed on that. So unless you all have, again, further questions on that after you vote on this item, I'll be glad to answer them, but I have nothing new to offer or present on that that I didn't already.
Okay. Well, council, if you're ready, let's go ahead and confirm a vote on the approving of text amendments to the UDO. Is there a motion?
Some.
Okay. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second. Second motion.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Vance. All right. Any lingering questions or concerns before we vote, council, by anybody? Okay, motion before us, I believe, is the Unified Developmental Text Amendment, UDO And so I'm going to ask the clerk if she will call. twenty oh two. Um, and so I'm going to ask the clerk if she will call the roll on this motion.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. Um, the motion passes unanimously. So, uh, that portion is taken care of. Um, Jeff, you wanna, uh, any, any other things you want to add? I believe you said we pretty well covered that, and I think we have, but, uh, or just see if council has any questions regarding the, uh, the fee schedule?
Yep, that'd be fine.
Okay. Uh, council, don't think I'll call the roll amongst you, but, uh, you, you've had that now since, I guess, our previous meeting. Any, any questions, uh, on, on that at all before we ask for a motion?
No questions.
Okay. All right, hearing none. Um, can I get a motion, uh, as relates to, uh, I gotta see how to properly say this here. Say it for me, Jeff. I guess it's, uh, adoption of UDO amendment package, uh, UDO twenty oh two, chapter ten D implementation, the fee schedule.
So, who, second?
Okay, moved in secondary properly. Uh, any questions before we vote, council? Okay, hearing none. I will ask the clerk to, uh, to call the roll for this, uh, particular vote.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, uh, council. Declare the motion, uh, is approved, unanimous vote. Um, uh, I believe that's all that we need to, uh, take care of on those matters. Anything else you have, Jeff?
No, just thank you very much. Um, I know that kind of, this feels like a, a big moment. Um, it's a small one by comparison to the next, the next moment that we'll have. But, um, but thank you all for your time and, um, just appreciate, uh, the questions and helping us get through this process.
Okay. Lot of, lot of work and a lot of good work. So, uh, so thank you and your staff and everybody who participated in that, for sure. Okay, council, um, we're now, uh, getting to, closer to the end of our agenda tonight, and I will go to item J, which, uh, would be committee reports, if there are any. Nobody has made me aware of any. Are there any committee reports from anyone?
No.
Okay, um, Mr. Manager, I know, uh, you have at least a couple of items, uh, that you, uh, need to give council information on.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, town council, I have, um, several. It shouldn't take too long. Uh, the standard ones you have are Garner info. Um, a lot of those items are in progress. We're working on those. And then you also have a building report. Um, the other things I'd like to mention, do I have an echo? Um, would be, uh, on March the twenty fifth is the TC, TCC coffee chat, uh, where the local development, uh, organization comes in and has a discussion with the town about, um, some of their thoughts and views on development and just a good chance to dialogue with the development community. Um, and that starts at eight thirty and goes to ten. And, um, we need to know, um, who's planning on attending that. You could let the, uh, town clerk, Ms. Gibson, know, um, because that will determine, you know, how we advertise, um, the event.
Uh, Rodney, will this be virtual or in person?
Um, I thought it was, oh, it's gonna be virtual, actually, but we still need to know. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
So, something on that sent out to us?
Yeah, I think something was sent out previously. Um, so just respond.
Yeah, it was a couple of weeks ago.
I mean, not, Ms. Gibson.
Was on the town Garner email.
Okay. Yeah, so starting at eight thirty that morning, uh, yeah, I've got it as virtual coffee chat, okay?
Right.
So if you plan to attend that, just, uh, give word, uh, to, uh, Ms. Gibson, if you will, okay? All right, Mr. Manager.
Another thing I'd like to mention is, um, NCDOT is having its annual, um, litter sweep, uh, starting April the tenth and going through the twenty fourth. And the town's gonna, um, take a, a active, maybe a more enhanced role in trying to get, um, members of the public, uh, involved, uh, in that. Uh, we've done that in the past and want to try to revive that and get some, um, some civic pride and those type of things, um, as one of the steps in trying to help with the, uh, the litter issues in Garner. Um, this is just one of the things we're gonna be doing. Uh, we'll be bringing back some other thoughts and ideas on, uh, the March work session. But, um, we did want to let the public know about that and that, you know, they can feel free to participate and groups can participate. It's a good chance for students to get, uh, community credit, if that's something they still doing right now in this COVID environment. But, um, just wanted to, to mention that and some other things we want to be doing with litter. And then, um, the GPAC at home series continues. We got Carson Hill on Thursday from seven to eight.
Thursday, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And, uh, that's it.
Rodney, can I ask a quick question? Uh, as far as the litter sweep is concerned, how will we advertise that? You know, we don't have a newspaper anymore and so forth. So how will we advertise that to the public?
We use our social media outlets, um, Facebook, um, if we could, some, sometimes we can do next door, depending on what type of access we have. Uh, we'll put it on our website. Uh, we have a newsletter. Uh, a lot of people have, um, subscribed to our newsletters. We'll do, uh, blast out on that and, uh, just all the different avenues we have.
Okay.
All right. Okay, was that everything?
Did I miss something else? I missed John or Matt?
Uh, Mr. Manager, I think one other thing we wanted to do was reach out to the civic groups, um, to try to, to get some involvement from some of them. We've got a pretty great civic network in town, and so we've talked about reaching out to them with a specific ask to help participate in this program.
Yes, and John, when you do that, if you all would include the women's club, they would be very happy to be involved as well.
Yes, ma'am, they're on our list.
Okay.
All right, that's all I got.
Okay, let me just make a quick comment. I don't have a formal report, but, uh, town manager and I have had, uh, several discussions, uh, on this and, uh, uh, I appreciate, um, his feedback on that. And as he's mentioned, I think, uh, at our work session, uh, there will be some more information brought to council by way of some, uh, recommendations. Um, uh, and I want to just give a quick shout out to the public works department. I, uh, there's a gentleman, uh, that, uh, walks our town in different areas and, uh, he has been involved with, uh, with picking up trash. And he had asked me recently if he picked up some in a certain area, if, uh, uh, public works could, uh, could arrange to come by and pick up several bags. And, uh, we worked it out and Mr. Jones was very helpful in, um, making sure his crew got out to, uh, pick up, uh, the good work that this gentleman did. And so, uh, um, I, I know Mr. Jones is certainly willing to participate in these discussions as we all work together on this particular issue. So thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Mr. Jones, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Rod, who was a guy that I dealt with. All right, uh, at this point, before we go to, uh, council reports, I will recognize our attorney. Um, I know we have a closed session, uh, after this, but, uh, Ms. Jones, did you have anything at this time?
Um, just briefly, I wanted to let, uh, the mayor and council know that I'll be participating in the municipal attorney's winter conference next Thursday and Friday, like, um, the twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Uh, so that'll be a Thursday afternoon and Friday morning. They're focusing very much on leasing issues this year, but also providing an update on, um, census information. So, uh, obviously, if I learn any important things, I'll be sharing that with council after that conference next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate that update for sure. Um, okay, we'll, uh, we'll go to, uh, council reports and, uh, I'll start, uh, tonight with Mr. Singleton.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Mr. Vance?
Hi, this is Mr. Mayor. I'm the council reference to, uh, ongoing concern that we have on Joan Sausage Road. Uh, I really appreciate the diligence of NCDOT and the town putting up those barriers along the side of, you know, Joan Sausage Road for no parking. Uh, however, uh, the trucks are still parking there at night. They're coming there and parking in between those barriers at night. So anything we can do to try to deter that type behavior, uh, at night, it would be greatly appreciated. The day has been curtailed, but it's night now where they're going to come, come there and, and park. Uh, and we have, uh, it, one issue that I believe needs to be, uh, discussed in more detail as to how to prevent that from happening.
Okay. Uh, just for my clarification, Mr. Vance, you know, I, I, I guess, are you talking about those areas? I call them stub outs where the, the orange, uh, I don't know if you call them bollards or whatever were, were put up, uh, or, or are you talking about it in a different location?
It, it, it is that, it is that location. They're parking in between.
Okay. Okay. So they're able to park in there and get, yeah, okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we, um, if I may add, we, the, uh, public work staff actually added, um, some white bollards. If you go by, you'll see some white posts that are delineating or, um, in the, the extra asphalt that it's striped off. Um, we thought those were installed in a manner in which the trucks would not be able to maneuver between them. Mr. Vance has shared me a couple of photos. Um, those were installed last Friday, I believe. Um, and he shared a couple of photos sent in by residents. So we're gonna go back and work to see if there's anything we can do to tighten those up. But we did want to thank public work staff. They took that on in addition to the signage that DOT has been working on with us.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff, for that update. Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Matthews?
Um, nothing, nothing this time. Uh, I guess my, one of my questions going to be, uh, as we move into the, the warmer days, and I know we're kicking around the third of July and people have been asking me about that, or are we any closer at this point? Are we still kind of waiting to see what the other communities are doing? I know at best it's kind of a wild guess at this point, and there's no need to commit funds unless somebody sees something totally we, we don't see. And we'd all like to have it, but, uh, are we any closer to we can elaborate at this time?
Um, I have not been privy to any conversations about that, uh, and, and, and maybe this is premature, but, uh, I guess one, one of the issues we want to clarify, uh, as soon as possible, I, I'm not sure if the, uh, if the orchestra is, uh, what, what, what level of function they're in and, uh, uh, whether or not they're, they, they will be available for something like that, or how soon we will know that. Does anybody, Matt or Rodney, uh, have any thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, town council, yeah, we've been talking about, um, large events and how, you know, those might go this year. Um, we're kind of feeling things won't be quite to normal as far as the gathering and those type of things by then. I mean, it, a lot of it depends on the rollout of the vaccine and those type of things. Um, we are looking at, uh, plans for having fireworks shoved, um, but it may not be the traditional, you know, everybody sit out on the lawn type, uh, event that we've had in the past. But we're looking at some alternative things, um, that we want to bring to council, um, that include fireworks.
Okay.
And Matt, you want to elaborate? Matt's kind of been overseeing.
No, I, I think that covers it. We're, we're still exploring options and aren't quite settled on what it would look like, but probably something different, like Rodney said, but, uh, with, with hopefully some, at least some similar characteristics to what people have expected in previous years.
Okay, thank you. Um...
Yeah, part of the issue, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Part of the issue is those decisions have to be made so far out that it's kind of hard to put resources and people in limbo when it looks like it's not going to be a typical, typical year, so.
Right. And I thoroughly understand that. And, and we had this conversation before where the symphony, I'm, I'm sure they like to book every, as much as they can, or fireworks people, but if things are not worth, we can actually employ them, what have you. I'd hate to commit revenue or contracts to them and not knowing. So, you know, uh, so I'm sure they were having the same problem with every municipality in Wake County. So we're not the only ones. And unless they're sharing with us. It's, it's a tough decision to make. And I don't want to spend lots of money on things that we're not going to be able to have if nobody else is doing them either. So, but, but, uh, tough decision, you guys. That's why you do what you do.
Okay. Uh, I'll next go to, uh, Mr. Dellinger for, uh, council report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, only thing, two quick things. Um, one, uh, we'll probably submit this to the, the town manager, but I, I think that we need to, I guess, as we get past the budget season and get through that, that tumult, um, really start looking at an electric vehicle plan and seeing if it's feasible, um, what that rollout would look like over the course of the next ten years, really, as you look to replace vehicles, um, for inspections and public works and police, um, kind of do it a rolling, maybe every year, assessment of what's on the market, what's available, um, what other municipalities are doing with regards to it, and looking at the, the benefits and the infrastructure requirements that might be necessary. Uh, and the other piece is, you know, there are lower maintenance costs for a lot of these vehicles. They don't have transmissions. They don't have emissions. They don't have need oil changes, all this stuff. But also, how do we, if we are going to implement some type of transition over a set period of many years, how do we train our existing staff to partially perform maintenance on these types of vehicles too, so we're not losing staff or, you know, getting rid of folks or they're not kept up to speed as we start to move over the next, really, ten years, probably, to an electronic, uh, fleet of vehicles? So I'll submit some information, kind of outlining what I just said. I think, um, it's something as we look to vehicle replacement, we want to start to look at what options may be available and also what benefits and costs, you know, balance there may be pros and cons both ways, um, but start to look at that, um, as, as we look to bring new vehicles into the, the fleet over the next several years. Um, that's all on that. Uh, and just briefly, I don't know how many of you may have known Max Adams. He was a Garner, um, native, went to Garner High School. He passed away last week. He was a member of the Lions Club and, um, the party's not important, but he was a proud Democrat. So he was very involved. Uh, he passed away last week and, uh, he, uh, he was a good person, a kind soul, and, um, we had a lot of good con, not many conversations, but a lot of good conversations over the past few years. And he will be very missed by all those who knew him, for sure. So.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Uh, I didn't know him personally, but I had heard, um, others speak of him and, uh, appreciate, uh, your comments there, Sheriff. Um, Ms. Behringer, uh, your turn.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, back to Mr. Vance, his comments about the trucks still parking where they're not supposed to park. Uh, that, they also park on the, uh, the ramps coming off of forty going on to forty overnight, every night. Do we have, uh, any, can we do anything about that? Or if we do not have any authority, can we, um, pass that on to somebody who does? It's, it's a little scary sometimes. Um, I'm always leery of people coming out from between trucks and stuff like that whenever we're in a traffic situation, but they're parking two and three trucks on those off ramps every night. So, um, who, who would deal with that?
We can, uh, we can report that to DOT.
Okay, all right. That'll be good. And the one more thing, I had a conversation with Joey Hopkins this morning, District Five engineer. Um, he is, uh, two things. They are going to look again at the Joan Sausage Road, uh, excuse me, railroad crossing on Joan Sausage Road at Whiteup Crossing near Cabela's. Uh, we've talked about it in the past and the field people have misinterpreted and thought we were talking about the other side of the railroad crossing where, um, at any rate, they weren't realizing there was a problem. But on the northbound side, as you try to cross the railroad track, there are a lot of pop outs. There's a lot of big holes on the side, and the ride is extremely bumpy over that crossing. So they're gonna look at that for us again. And, um, I talked to him about the litter pickup. Of course, we know that's a problem throughout the state. And he told me that they did put the, um, the mess at, on Creech Road down the curve after you cross the bridge on their pickup list. He said he could not tell me when they would get it done, but, um, that they, it was on their radar and that it was their responsibility and they were going to address it. And that's all. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, good reports from all. I think that covered everybody. Did I miss anybody?
Mr. Mayor, am I missing some, something also?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Dellinger mentioned someone who had passed away. We had a, a longtime Garner employee, former employee, Sandy Teal, who was in, still our inspections department, passed away. He'd been battling, you know, he had pancreatic cancer. And been battling that for quite some time. But Sandy was married to Jenny Salty, who was in our planning department for many years. They retired a couple of years ago, so I want to remember them, his good work. Sandy was, was a good guy, much like Mr. Beasley, kind of, kind of, kind of laid back and kind of, even though they hadn't enforced the rules and the laws of the state of North Carolina, used the common sense approach in doing so. So I'd like to mention that also. I know that many of our staff were here when Sandy worked here with the town. So I'd like to pass that on. And thoughts and prayers to his family, also to his wife, Jenny, again, another longtime Garner employee.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Well, well stated, and I certainly have fond remembrance of him. He was on the staff when I first became a council member. And I remember good things about him, so thank you for that recognition. Okay, council, I believe that covers all of you. So if we don't have anything else, I'm going to suggest that we have a motion to go into a closed session to consult with our town attorney.
So moved.
Okay, moved. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I guess the general statutes, I'm looking at it correctly. Ms. Jones is 143.318.11A3 to consult with the attorney. So we'll call the roll, I guess, one more time, Ms. Gibson, on this matter, to go into closed session.
And also A5.
Oh, excuse me, A5.
On real estate acquisition.
Thank you. Thank you. You're exactly right. Okay. So, Ms. Gibson, if you'll call the roll on this vote, we'll get ready for a close session.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. I declare that we will now go into closed session. There will be a slight delay while we get ready, and so be prepared in just a few moments, and we'll proceed, okay? So don't go anywhere. Okay, council, we are back in open session, having been in closed session to consult with our town attorney regarding some litigation and also to discuss real estate acquisition and some processes relating to that. And we heard from the attorney in regards to those matters. Anything else to come before council at this time?
You'll just need to say that, that council took action in the closed session to adopt two resolutions.
Okay, thank you, yes. Council did take action while in closed session to adopt two resolutions in regards to our conferred with council. Okay, we good? All right, if there's nothing else to come before this council, and I have nothing left on my agenda, so I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and properly seconded. Do we need to do a roll call? If not, I'll ask for a vote.
No, you can just do that by consensus.
Okay, good, yes. All right, council, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there is no opposition. So I want to thank council and all staff and the attorney and everybody else who was involved with the meeting tonight. Wasn't sure how long it will take us, but I think we covered a lot of ground, and we certainly covered our agenda, so that's commendable. Thanks for your good work, and I guess we'll next see you at a work session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if I may ask one more thing. I, I need some forms. I, I sent an email out to council last week about some forms that need to be filled in and sent back to me. And please, I need to get those by the end of this week.
Okay, council, you are aware of that request, and I've got a little more work to do on mine. So I encourage you all to do that and get it to her even earlier than that if you can. That would be appreciated.
Oh, yeah, that would be wonderful.
Okay. All right, I declare that we are in adjournment, and we'll see you at the next scheduled meeting. Thank you all for your time.